There's already some in there.
Do you want to speak?
I have a sign.
That's it?
Yes.
Copy. Roger.
There's already some in there.
Do you want to speak?
Have a sign.
That's it?
Sign.
Just kidding. Yes. Look at this here.
I see him.
Okay.
Four years ago.
Chucking this morning. It's fine. I won't go with that. We're trying to see.
It's over.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council Meeting, Greenwood, Arkansas, this Tuesday, December the 5th, 2023, approximately 7:13 PM. Mr. Terry, would you call over?
I see Brown.
Here.
Rob Baker.
Here.
Jim Terry.
Here.
Rocco Ramon.
Here.
Dan Daniel.
Here.
Rob Powell. There's we have a board.
Thank you. If everyone would please stand. We'll begin our meeting tonight with a prayer led by Daniel McDaniel, right, and a pledge led by Chief Sturrock.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this state of life that you've blessed us with, and we are thankful always, Father, for this great city that we live in. We pray, Father, for this board tonight that you would give us discernment, that you would give us wisdom, that we would make decisions that are best for the community. Lead us all, Father, in our lives. Help us to live as we should. Forgive us, Father, of our sins. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask the council to consider approving the minutes for this number of six, 2023, regular City Council Meeting.
Do you want to make the motion?
You sort of bits. Thank you. You have a motion to second to approve.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have the recognitions and acknowledgements tonight. We appreciate everybody coming tonight, and we acknowledge that you're here. Thank you, Thomas, for being here for the press. Appreciate you. And I have a card here in my hand, De Frankly. There he is right there. So Frank brought me a card from the Senior Citizen Center, and they all signed it. I've shipped it. There's no cash in it, so just letting everybody know. But thank you till this.
Texts in the mail.
Shits in the mail. Story of my life. Thank you so much. We do not accept donations from the center. Go on record. Thank you. Thank you.
We try to don't listen.
Yes, you do. Okay. Committee reports. Did not get an offer. We've had three meetings in here in the last four, three, four, five hours, so it's kind of a rush for us, thank you. Committee reports submitted. Kenny Sunday is here. Did you want to address anything that's in the report?
No, I just wanted to tell everybody and thank you.
I'm sorry. Is that an LSU?
Yeah. Give everybody a laugh. Just tell y'all thank y'all for everything y'all done between the City Council, the AMP, and the people in Greenwood that's helped us out this year. If you haven't been by there lately, you really need to drive by there. I mean, it looks like a brand-new place, and we really appreciate it. We got the roof done, so the leaks that were there when Doug was there now are completely done, and we really want to say thank you, and we'll see. Mayor, you're going to play Santa.
Absolutely.
You're going to play Santa, and we really appreciate that. We have a pageant Sunday that the contestants are, when they come in, they give a gift, so we'll be able to give a gift to 100, 150 kids in the community from that. This Saturday, if you want to see some great basketball, we got your first jamboree. We got 60 teams, 64 teams will be playing at the club and at the high school arena and everything, and we'd like to say thanks to BJ and Coach Young to get us that. So, but thank y'all very, very much.
That school, you're getting to play for the arena, that's awesome. Thank you, Kenny, for what you do. I know you work hard. It does look nice. I want to buy it, so it looks nice.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be in the sessions today all day Saturday with this team. Do you want to rep? Do you want to call?
You want to rep also?
We do need somebody that wanted a mic to call and play.
A gentleman right in front of you to your left.
He likes it?
He does that for a living.
Or really?
Football, but it's all the same.
We give you volunteer hours. I'm all over.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do, because it's Christmas. Would you like a three-man team? Wouldn't that be cool?
Yeah.
So on this end of the table, you've got AC Brown, Mr. Baker, and Mr. Terry at all the call, and a few games down here. Well, never mind, you don't want to go. All right, moving on. SRCA, Lisa's not here. Frank, you want to give a quick word of what's going on over there? See, you're the heartbeat of that thing. You just made something up.
We're just waiting on that.
I hear you. I hear you. You're feeding folks every day. We appreciate what you do. And so, yeah, I gave a report to the crew over there a few weeks ago about what's going on with the center, where we are. Put that back out for bid. It came back closer, still not where we need it, so we're trying to wheel that down. Actually, made some really nice contacts on some equipment for that facility, so we can save some money on that end, so I'm waiting to hear back from some of those folks, too. So we're going to get you there.
Well, I also appreciate it. Didn't make it by September my birthday, so.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
I hope it'll be before next September.
Hopefully so, yes. We'll have a party out there.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Parks Commission, Mr. Goldstein's here. Would you like to make a comment or two, or not? I think Casey put in a report. No? Yes.
Is it on my email?
Okay.
Messed it out? Okay. I didn't get it.
There we go. Waterways Water Commission, I know Teresa's been there for a few hours now. Anything to add to what's already been reported?
We had our public meeting, and it was a fair turnout, and Tom and Nancy did a great job presenting it, and I think very understandable, and we didn't have too many negative comments.
I thought it was good.
And I don't know, do you want to tell us about that pump station?
We do have a lift station in Minnewell. I'm sure anyone that's went by there has seen the big green pump sitting up there. Transformer exploded a few weeks ago, and they took both pumps out in that site, and electric company sent to replace the transformer and all the wiring from the transformer to the site. We received our pumps, being rebuilt. We'll see those going, hopefully by the end of the week, that old station is back to 100% functionality. We also replaced several of the electric pumps inside their pumps. We're working, building them up, hopefully get back up to normal, but we did have it temporary operation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. We're now at the citizen forum part of the meeting. Tim, would you mind taking the young lady there at the door, this microphone, for me, please? You don't care. The mic's right there. Yeah, would you mind taking? Thank you. She refers to address her back there, and that's fine. Thank you. And I don't have your name, ma'am, if you wouldn't mind. I mean, I've got some information. Would you give your name and address? And you have five minutes to address the council.
I would use my Alice, for instance, I was a scout of last year in Japan, and a person looks at the internet to try to find me out. He promised to kill me because I'm Russian Jewish, so he was arrested, but it's not enough for me. It's why I would like to address people from here. I would say last name is Kunirsch, and I rent at 1600 Meadow Bridge. It's a Meadow Brook South neighborhood. So I'll start. I'm in mourning today, today, December the 5th, actually, my mom's day of passing. She was 53. Just 13 days ago, I lost my brother. He was 53. It's all looks surreal. He was driving to his shift at the hospital. He was killed by a big truck on the interstate, and my Jewish husband's memorial is funny. He also was 53. It's all happened overseas, and it looks, at least to say, suspicious. I tried to talk to those people overseas, and I disagree with them, like with you, Mayor Kinzel. My late ex-mother-in-law, Kunirsch, she was a mother of my Jewish husband. She used to constantly criticize me, find faults in me, and when she wanted to avoid me, like you did when I tried to reach you in City Councils, for the reason of me being harassed at the Meadow Brook now for almost two months, you were not there. There were no response from my alert, from my message on the phone, nothing. I do not know the individuals that harassed me. Everybody in Woody Hub says that they're respectable people. It's Pat Opan Williams and Ronnie Williams, and I find their behaviors at least the same psychic and alarming. They wait for me to leave property, which is cottage at 1600 Meadow Bridge, and follow me out of neighborhood. Even at night, when I need to make a phone call because a roof on the cottage sometimes doesn't allow good reception on my phone, she runs out of rush and follows me with your SUV to the stop sign, which is just going from Thistle Drive to Meadow, to Meadow Bridge. I waited for a month for that to stop because it's insulting, it's a harassing nature. Then I decided to call the police, and I filed two reports, and Mr. Hobbs here, he started to tell me that it's not, not, he doesn't think they're harassing me, he doesn't think they're stalking me, and I think the opposite way. It is why I thought maybe remove him, not remove him, but they did not help. They started to doubt that it's happening, as if I made it up, which I don't. I tried to explain to him clearly that I'd been assaulted in Japan, but I'm known to miss counter. You have never met before, he stalked me a half of a day prior to it, and I waited to call Japan PD because I thought, well, they would say you're just, you know, it's not important. So he hit me, he promised to kill me, he broke my lip, I need to get four or five emergency stitches in the emergency room. And I know somebody gives him rights, and he travels from state to state, so I do not want even from my information from Greenwood, Arkansas, to go on the web, because police, all they did, they arrested him and they closed deal behind my back. They only gave him 45 days in jail. Even I felt he should have gone to prison because there was a stalking charge, there was threat to my livestock, charge, and assault, actually, itself. And what if he would have had a knife? I wouldn't be here. With so many funerals and grief in the family, me not having a husband, not having my own home, where I feel protected from here, from property plates. Plates went missing, all of a sudden, dining plates. After I started to experience Williams' behavior, all of it makes me feel that it's not that safe to live here. Yet, I do not have another place to go, so I wanted for police to look at that really seriously, and I filed a paper with prosecutor in the county office for City of Greenwood, who still did not reply to me. He'll issue warrant for Williams, because last time Williams has done it, it was sarin. Where she followed me twice, in the morning and in the evening once again.
You have one minute.
And I am tired of it. So you would remind now my late ex-mother-in-law, because she would just, you know, also give me limited time. Your son was studying out of state like yours, but they will die. So I've heard Williams lost kids and run kids, but it's not concern of mine. I'm asking you to resign because you paid no attention to my endless tryouts to reach you, to show that while I'm looking for employment after separating from Alpha for no reason, where ex-police men throw my lunch away for no reason, and nonsense after nonsense, I'm without a job for five and a half weeks. I do not solicit from Mr. Biden, who himself, I mean, he is a gray, with gray hair, lost a daughter, a wife and a son. I don't solicit food stamps or unemployment. So I'm without a job, five and a half weeks, yet they're doing all that stuff to me, which is psychotic, and I cannot find another way. Why none of you pay attention to it? I don't know.
Ma'am, your time is up. I appreciate you coming. It sounds like that you've already visited with the police department, and I don't know, officer, we have a city attorney here. I don't know if there's any advice from them to do.
As I said, it's why I'm asking you to step down and City Council, which is responsible for the district.
You're asking for my resignation in the council, or just mine?
Yes, yes, yours and that council and Mr. Hobbs. And I did have offered for a job. I vouch for immigrants, since I don't have a job, and immigrants suffer in deep cities. One of those is where Mayor is under criminal investigation, Eric Adams, like you, Kinzel. Yeah, another Chicago, San Francisco, Los Angeles.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to stop. I can only ask. We appreciate you coming and giving your information.
I'd love to decapitate him for the center for immigrants, not build a park.
Thank you. Counsel, did you want to address anything? Thank you, ma'am. Next on the list, I believe we have, Ms. Chavez? If you wouldn't mind coming in. Did you want to speak? Or?
Well, I, yes.
If you just tell us your name and address.
My name is Sida Chavez, and I live on 205 West Jones.
I'm sorry. I'm just sidebar. I'm sorry. Yes, you get your address. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just here to matter to liquor license. As we stated before, you know, we've got several venues, we got somewhere, now there's a part missing there that I guess allows La Fiesta specifically to sell liquor. So I'm asking you to see where we at, or what are we going to do, since they're already...
I think, yeah, thank you. We appreciate you coming, W. You've been here several, several times. I appreciate what your, what your efforts are. Daniel, did you want to address this? I know you've got some questions.
I had the same question that you just asked. I mean, I was going to ask if we put this on the agenda tonight for discussion. I still would like to put it on the agenda for discussion for another reason, but that was my, that was going to be my question, is where are we at? Have you done anything? Have you?
Well, the ABC, we're not, we're good. The owners and everybody who owns that building, everybody already went to the liquor, like, for the liquor license, liquor firm, the seminar, the seminar, or whatever it's called, I'm not sure. It's already cool.
There's a whole process in our ordinance that has to be followed.
Yes.
One of those things that with the application that's right here, you know, there's this whole list of stuff that you have to have. ABC requires a whole list of things.
Yes, they do.
And our ordinance says whatever you require to give ABC, you also bring to us, which you give to the city clerk, who will place it on our agenda.
Right.
Where we have to have an ordinance specific to La Fiesta.
Yes.
To my knowledge, none of that's been done.
Now, I have some paperwork, which is not enough, going on, complete. I'm just facing, like, I talked to the Charlotte about the application getting here. I know that was going to happen, like, pretty quick, on getting the coffee off the ABC and all that, because that's one of the main things, the application adds, like, application from here, the coffee of that, where you're already allowed, and everything, everything else, I have it in hand, so basically, that's the only thing that we're waiting for our child to get in.
The way I understand it, Rod, you wrote something along that. There's a whole process to go through here. You've got to have all the same stuff that you take to ABC, they bring it to us. There would be an ordinance. If that ordinance is passed, you then could go to ABC with that ordinance and all that. If they issue you a permit, you come back here and we issue you a permit. Correct?
And it says to us, "Hate approval on number six." After that application is adopted by ordinance, and the effective date of the ordinance is established, applicant must seek approval from the state agency.
Got approved, must be permanently issued by the city. Permanently issued.
So it sounds like, are you gentlemen saying that, and I think we've talked, we've all talked about this a little bit, she's done some legwork, or gone to Clutchy, or someone there from the restaurant has gone and done these classes, and I saw her certificate over there. But we need to get, we need to get her application in your hands, in Charlotte's hands.
She's tried twice.
Right, she's been.
I've had to decline it.
And so, the point is to get it in your, in her hands, to get it in your hands, so we can get it approved and an ordinance, her, her address and all that.
The one thing I'd like to put on our, well, and we have another discussion, or we have a discussion now, wherever we go. Our, Rod reminded me, oddly, that I wrote the application, because I was like, do we have an application? I guess I wrote the name in 2018. But I looked at it today, and it's kind of screwed up with our current ordinance, the ordinance that's just passed.
The maximum ordinance.
So we need to work on that application. It's, you know, my advice at this stage of the game is follow the ordinance that trumps a resolution, so our application a little needs to be worked on.
What's different than the original ordinance that we passed besides the footage?
You mean on the application?
Yes. The ordinance we passed.
The original one is not anything different than the one we just passed last year, except for the 460.
That establishes, you know, what we expect.
We got our, your.
Resolution that Daniel followed the ordinance with that was attached, so when, when she goes to Charlotte's out, I need all that. Actually, Charlotte hands her this information and includes a sample ordinance to applicant. It says, "Sample ordinance to be issued to applicant." So Charlotte gets her that, and then it may be that she, and it's fine with us, I mean, certainly by me, you have the city attorney just fill in the blanks and make sure it's fine, or if she wanted to do it, or whatever, and then that is brought back to us. That's what we approve or disapprove, and it's always, my understanding is that's the official part that goes to ABC saying, "I'm cool with the City of Greenwood."
That's per us saying that, right? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, she's got to take something there that says, City of Greenwood says, "I'm good." She has nothing to take to them yet.
Oh, you haven't been to the ABC to get approval yet?
We have, because we send off that paperwork, the first one, the city ordinance on the footage and everything, so I was a little bit confused when we came to, like, La Fiesta specifically, ask to ask for the city ordinance just for the property, so.
That ordinance that we passed is kind of a board play standard, if you will, and one of the things in that is you.
Yes.
So the application process and meeting the ordinance that we have in place that establishes are two different things. I mean, they're the same, but the application process has, doesn't seem to me like it's been followed.
No, and I've talked to Ms. Chavez several times. I would agree, and she agrees too, I think, knowing now what that process is. I want to say this, that we, and I'll include myself in this, have not, I don't think we made it clear to her over the last three months. She's been coming for three months for a week.
Well, I have, I've visited with her.
I understand, but you can visit with someone, but that doesn't mean they understand. This is nothing against you. I don't think it was clear. My point of only saying that, I'm not throwing blame, I'm just saying, we need to help, we need to get things rolling and not take another 90 days to visit.
I think we've done our part. We've.
No, I don't think we have.
Yeah, because we'd like to.
You weren't here, Rod. You weren't here. You had to be here.
Well, we'd like to, the city clerk to promote the application.
I understand, but she came for three months and was not clear on exactly how this process works. If we didn't explain it, I didn't.
Well, the only thing that we've done wrong is not have the ordinance on.
That's what I'm saying.
Specifically that says her business. If the BMW were to put one in, they have to have one that says BMW after five minutes.
And everybody's okay with it. I mean, I think, I'm not saying everybody, "All right, ordinance."
I gave her that information the very first time. I know, I know there's a difference between here and to my.
Giving it to someone and them knowing it is not the same.
And she's not able to pass.
I'm just saying. So, and I'm only saying all this, not to throw stones at anybody, but I'm saying it's so we do not drag our feet for another 90 days of working on our own ordinance, and you just said, Daniel, that it doesn't even match the resolution. We got to get our act together.
Our application for the form, I mean, it's not gross.
But it doesn't need to take months.
Well, let's add it in that general.
He's the one who's saying it's wrong.
Our, our ordinance, our ordinance, if you read it, and I don't know if anybody's read the thing or not, frankly, but if you read our ordinance, it tells you the step-by-step process. And so, here's what, I want to tell you on something, what, you won't like this, but I, I heard the other day, and I was actually in your restaurant, talking to you, and hey, there's a bar, and then I've had some people call me and say, "Hey, do they have a liquor license?" I said, "Well, no." And, well, I heard that they do, so that started, I called the mayor, "Hey, what's going on?" "I don't know." And so, here's what I've finally learned. We've talked about all of this, how the state has thrown this in our laps, about how for us to figure this out, okay? I called the ABC the other day myself, just to hear it from the horse's mouth and talk to the attorney at ABC. And so, you know, I'm reading state law. The only thing allowed in a dry area is a private club, permit. He said, "Yes, that's correct." Okay, I read the definition of a private club. It's a nonprofit organization for a common purpose, blah, 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 blah. And, yeah, that's right. He said, "Well, I don't see how that applies to a restaurant." And so, he said, "Well, that's what we put back on the municipality." And so, what I finally figured out is, if you read our ordinance, number seven in our ordinance says that we're going to presume, the applicant is qualified, ABC rules and regulations say we're going to presume what you tell me is true. And so, it's written in a way that you can use this if that's what you want to do, or you can use this if it's not what you want to do. But he told me very point-blank, surprisingly, that we're not going to do anything to validate what you tell us. I said, "So the whole thing's just a lie. We're just making this up." Nonprofit thing, you have to have this nonprofit, blah, 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 to even be considered private club, yeah, pretty much. I mean, I thought the guy put some legislation on it, but he didn't. I mean, that's pretty much what he said, but, you know, and I talked to Lee Johnson about it in Little Rock the other day, and said, "You know, my problem with this, I don't care. Everybody thinks I'm trying to sanitize Greenwood. I'm not. I mean, I'm not naive. I don't care if La Fiesta sells alcohol or not. That's fine." And I talked to Lee Johnson about it, and I said, "If that's what we're going to do, what I don't like about it is the lying aspect and the, we're going to, we're going to put you in a situation where you're going to make something up, is what we're going to do, and then we're going to throw that on the city's lap, and you're either going to say okay, or you're not going to say okay, and then they're just going to, because that's, gets by." And I talked to Lee, and I said, "Look, if that's, if that's what we're going to do, the legislature needs to change this thing, says in a dry area, give municipal, the municipality the power to say, we're going to allow..." to say, "We're going to allow this at a bona fide food serving restaurant to sell unpremised alcohol. And call it what it is. And if that's what you wanna do, then pass it and let them sell alcohol." But this system of scurrying around and the whole thing, get what we want, that's what I don't like about it. So, sorry about the one.
No, that, you make perfectly good sense. You know, I talked about the same thing. And I, I, the only thing I would say to that is, I took, one, I, I agree with you and maybe they can fix that. We knew back with legislation through it on the council to begin with, there was a, it was a buffer between us and, uh, us and those people and the, not those people, I mean, anybody that wanna put in a, a private club and, and the state. But, I would say, it's on the state. I mean, we, we've got, we need to follow ours for sure. And, and ours says very plainly, she needs to get an application, that needs to go back to ABC. And, and so, I would say, on your behalf, if you don't mind me saying, they got a little ahead of the game. And I talked to your, one of your partners or family members there the other day. So, the bar that you referred to is indeed a counter there. It doesn't have any alcohol in it, but it is set up, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a platform. It's a place for bars. Doesn't have any alcohol, so they don't have, they don't have it yet, but they've gotten a little. In fact, she told me that she told her husband, "Do not build that." But anyway, there's that. So, and, and just because that's there doesn't mean, if the process doesn't work, you're not gonna, you won't, you'll have to set somebody there to eat, I guess. So, I, I just wanna say that I don't want us to be the block for them. One, because I don't, even though they got the application, even though they got all the paper that they should've had, we could've been talking about this for the last three months. That's my only point. And I don't wanna slow that process down. And I'm not, that's my point. You got something, somebody?
I'm just wondering what the last three, what did we do in the last three or four weeks?
Well, well, we, 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 you got, you, you gentlemen passed the ordinance that allowed her to even be able to apply because before she was not, to our own restrictions, she could not.
Yeah.
So, that was the, that was the three months, and you had to take it. Nobody wants to rush this. I'm not asking that. So, you took that three months to, to make changes, amendments to set ordinance, uh, to allow.
And we should've changed our application.
That's what I'm talking, that should've been during.
But we overlooked.
Yeah, and we did, and that's all I'm saying, yeah. That's, and I'm not saying you or anybody else, I'm just saying we.
How come we did that by resolution? Like, we should've just made it.
Because we didn't have the application at the time.
We probably should do that as an end of the ordinance, so it's tied with.
But that's the work that was done in the ninety days, was allowing even, giving her the opportunity to apply.
Well, to me, it's, it's a, uh, maybe, I don't know, the city attorney should shed some light on this. It's a cumulative process in that you're, you're kinda establishing a club within a, a business already existing, you know? So, you're gathering members for this club. And that this club itself is a nonprofit entity, but it is being hosted inside a for-profit restaurant. I, I don't know if you could share more light on that, because it does seem confusing, like saying, oh, like, they're not a nonprofit, or a restaurant.
Are you a nonprofit? Let me ask that question. You have a nonprofit?
I would answer that, but I.
I would, I had a restaurant and that was nonprofit.
We had, there's a legitimate nonprofit status with state ordinance, so, you know, filed with Secretary of State, blah, blah, blah. I don't, I mean, do you have that?
Well, all the paperwork, like I said, all the paperwork for a vain lady with us, all the paperwork, she would be the one that could answer that. Cause I don't wanna say yes or no, because I don't have the means of knowing if it is or not, or what's what, so.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, unfortunately, I, I would, I'm guessing that you're not, just because no one's brought that forward to us or mentioned it. And unfortunately, the process is this crazy. You talked to the attorney, I don't wanna look at you. You talked to the ABC attorney and he said, "If you guys want this to happen, you can let it. If you don't, here's your way to keep it from happening." That's basically what he said, right? So, it's, it's a messed up.
Well, it's a pretty black and white. I mean, if you read what it says.
Why not?
If you take it.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the other way.
It's a pretty black and white thing.
Yes. So, sorry, did you have?
Please, I, I don't know if I can.
By the way, let, let me do this real quick. In this, we are, this is, uh, on, in the wrong spot, and you added, you asked a while ago. It probably, you really should be added to the agenda to discuss further. We're, well, well, over the time. Are you willing to stay?
Yeah, I'm pleased to stay.
So, let's do that, make sure the process is done correctly here. So, we'll add it as number fourteen, just call it private club license discussion, okay?
Well, when we get to the top.
That are, and we can move without you, so whatever you guys wanna do.
Yep. We're already needing one if you vote.
Okay, so let's get through a couple of things, we'll get you back there. Thank you, I'm sorry. So, uh, no one else on the citizen forum, I don't believe. Okay, we'll move on to financial report. Mr. Marsh, sorry.
I'm gonna be brief, because there's two items on the agenda that are significant. One would be the water sewer audit report, and the other would be the federal or public funding report, that'll come later. So, I'm just gonna give you the highlights of the financials. You have the full report in your tablets, I believe, if not, a hard copy. Uh, the budgeted city sales and use tax again is four point five for the year, cumulative, we're at five point nine. That is the eighth consecutive decrease in our cumulative growth. However, it is still growth, because we are one point four percent above what we budgeted. That's good. County sales tax, different story. We budgeted more aggressively, eight point five percent. The cumulative growth is actually five point eight, similar to in line with the city sales and use tax. The cumulative growth of our budget is actually negative two point seven percent. That does affect our operational, um, in our operational departments. As far as cash flows, our advertising promotion, we budgeted six percent. They have experienced five point three one percent. They're down about a half a percent on the AAP. A lot of that, we found out today in the AAP meeting, was, uh, there's some delinquent, uh, costs. We're still waiting on some additional revenue to come in. Uh, usually a couple will straggle into their next month, and then you have a big next month. So, it's probably gonna land somewhere in the six percent, but we just settled on a budget for them next year, five percent. So, they're gonna stay a little conservative next year. Um, remember, inflation is their friend and their foe, because inflation does come back to them as form, in the form of increased city sales and use tax, as the tax is calculated on the actual cost of the ice. The downside to that is that as inflation rises, people start spending less, and they don't have the money, customers come to buy that price goods. As far as cash flow is concerned, in the month of November, we ended with two hundred and eighty one thousand dollar increase in cash. Our current fund balance for all funds is sixteen million, one ninety. We're budgeted for twelve million. That's, uh, supposed to be a decrease of twenty eight, uh, percent. Right now, we're a decrease against what we started with, uh, three point six percent. So, we're way in line with our budget, actually. Most of that is gonna be the, uh, capital expenses, you see down below that. Capital expense actual was two point nine million. That's actually spent right at three, but our budget was eight. So, we're at thirty seven point twenty one percent. Believe it or not, that's actually one of the higher, um, percentages we've had at this stage of the game. So, we're going in the right direction, we're starting to move some projects forward, that's actually good. And I gave you the breakdown on the next page of that, that's the capital expense report. I'm starting to give you that now, that shows the street, uh, resurfaced capital improvement projects and capital expenditures. You see the eight going in there, and you see where the two point nine came from, broke down by, by department, category. And, I believe, that is the highlights. Um, I do want to mention that, uh, I did have a meeting with the SRCA, uh, with Deanna, and, uh, we talked about her contract. I notice it's not on the agenda. Um, January is not too late, because that, you'll actually have a meeting before any kind of check would have to be done for January. Cause that, we do those contractual payments on the fifteenth. So, um, she was gonna get me some numbers back, but right now, we were discussing whether there should be any kind of an increase in the actual amount that we give per month that has stayed stagnant for years. At two thousand, we give twenty four to them for the programs. She has seen significant increase in the meals, in the meal service, mostly to, out of the, not in the center, but deliveries. And the cost increases come from the, the gas, the transportation costs, and the packaging costs, as well as the, the grocery store food. So, what they're really looking for is help in the food area, as you said. Um, right now, they get some kind of, uh, some kind of money from the county as well. But she can break out those meal costs as well, from what we're contributing. There is a waiting list for people to get on the food program right now, and that's, that's something that hasn't happened in years. And so, that is a big issue for them. So, in the contract, I've, um, I initially put in thirty six thousand, which just increases it a thousand dollars a month for them, for a thirty six thousand dollar contract. The twenty five thousand for the repairs expense is still in there, but the maintenance, utilities and such goes over to the senior center that they're gonna be moving into. That's gonna become ours anyway, and it's not part of her program. So, we're gonna have a savings there, because that cost will drop, the other cost will be much less. Our repairs and maintenance for sure will be non-existent for the first couple of years. So, I think it's well within the realm to maybe entertain that. But she is gonna get me back the hard number on that, and what she's gonna be requesting. So, I wanted you to at least hear that.
And, and you just said, "I'm sure we're, we're good for January on that, not to."
You are. Because if you, if you entertain this on a formal contract review, January, it's before your meeting, it's before the first check would go out. If you approve the contractor and make provisions to it, then you can sign it. And then we will disperse on the fifteenth of January based on the contract.
Anything for Tom? Thank you, sir. Did you have additions? We did, I think the council's good with adding that number fourteen.
We also need to add some more contracts.
Yes, we do.
Animal sheltering every month. We need to probably do them one at a time, since some there may not be.
Just stick them at the bottoms, that's right, okay, with that, shouldn't they? So, that change animal shelter?
Yes. And then, we see, uh, need to add the council calendar adoption.
The what?
Council calendar adoption.
Okay.
And then a janitorial contract.
For here?
Yes.
Go ahead. Move up the contract, please.
No, it's, it's just, say.
Uh, is it all together?
No, it's different.
It's just sitting on.
Do you have?
You have a contract?
Right, you're changing here.
I don't either, I never know.
Is it same, is it, is it? She either?
No.
No?
You pay a different price. Okay.
Okay.
But the same, same part, we're not gonna pay that.
You're not changing anything in the contract? Which we still need to prove, I think, with time, with the computer.
Any contracts?
Even without a change, but, so we can do that in January?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, would you, the, the citizens and the police, generate a contract in January? Or in the?
Yes, yes. Okay, everybody good with those?
Does she be interested in doing both?
Uh.
She already does the pavilion, too.
Yes, she, I mean, if I were her, I would be, I don't know.
Something we discussed.
Yeah, well.
You can talk about it, we'll get to the, the January meeting.
Yep. Give it, give it. Maybe I'll, she gets to talk into it. Okay. Uh, so those. You got no more? That's an agenda addition, so we'll get right into all the unfinished business. I'm gonna move it. Sir? Oh, I'm sorry, did you wanna move?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna move to fourteen, uh, so we're gonna move fourteen up to one. So, who wants to move up then?
Will I have it?
Well, thank you, Travis.
Oh, yes, did you wanna? Chair.
Well, I, I can try to shed a little light on this, but I'm not an expert, um, in this area, but I have seen it before and heard about it before. Um, so, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that La Cesta's engaged an attorney that specializes in, in getting this process done through the ABC. Okay? And part of that process is, um, you know, what they're gonna pay this attorney for is to, uh, purchase a, an existing nonprofit that's been in existence for at least one year, okay? And so, that's where the nonprofit comes in. They are not a non, not-for-profit organization, but there will be one as part of their, their representation by their attorney that's helping them with this. I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, the, the hangup with the, the application is that, the, the one missing piece is that, um, she has to bring approval from the ABC with her, but in order to get that, we have to pass our ordinance. So, uh, our.
Well, she brings, to get the permit from us.
Right.
She will have to come back with her approval from ABC.
But she can't get that until we pass our ordinance specific to them.
Right.
Right. We, we could pass our ordinance if she brings us everything that's required, which our ordinance says, everything ABC requires, we require. Bring all of that to us for our, because that's the, again, that's the part, ABC's thrown in our lap. And so, we're gonna have you verify this, so the blood's not on our hands.
She can't get anything from ABC until we pass our ordinance specific to her.
But everything that ABC requires, we require.
Yes.
When you come, you go to Charlotte, you fill out the application, give Charlotte all of that information. Charlotte puts it on the agenda and brings it to us, which I guess leaves this council as the people who are going to vet that candidate in the process to determine you've met all of our requirements.
All right.
If we do, we pass the ordinance. She goes to ABC, says, "Here it is, I've got the ordinance." "Okay, here's your permit." She comes back to Greenwood, Greenwood gives her their Greenwood, uh, supplemental privilege permit, or whatever it's called.
Well, it says in here on six, once she comes back from ABC, she's got her ordinance, she goes to ABC, she brings it back. Then, if approved, the city permit will be issued by the city clerk. No city permit will be issued until an applicant has first received a state permit. So, she brings her state permit back with Charlotte, and, uh, she kinda.
What she's been missing on my end, why I have declined it, uh, when she submitted it, is the ABC, a copy of the ABC application. I have to have that. Not that they passed it, just the copy of it, of their application, and I, she didn't have it.
But did, but does our, did we write an ordinance that conflicts with what? To get, in a, to get, I mean, if.
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think there's a conflict on that.
I didn't finish my sentence, I did not.
Just take a plea, I wanna hear it.
No, I'm saying, if, 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 if attorneys are right, if I may, you're saying that they need, they need, they need our ordinance passed in order to give her permission specific. So, but we're not gonna do that until she gets, we're waiting on each other.
No, no.
No.
She has to come to us with the application, with everything required. And when I say everything required by ABC, ABC says, "You have to be a nonprofit, you have to be in business for a year. You have to give me this, you have to give me that."
So, when you say.
You have to have limits from this meeting, you have to have an address.
But not our, but not our approval.
And her, her attorney will make sure that they have all that.
They get all that stuff.
I thought you were trying to say they.
We say, "We accept the lie that you're a nonprofit." Okay.
They'll have, they'll have a valid existing.
No, they won't be a nonprofit.
No, they, they won't be, but they don't have one.
What's I'm saying?
They're two separate entities.
The restaurant won't be, there'll be a nonprofit.
That's correct.
And, and I'll say, on record, not a hundred years ago, forty years ago, I was with Juan's Mexican Restaurant. My owner was the owner, and that's exactly how he established a private club within Juan's. It was called Castle Lomca or something. So, he had to get that, and he had a private club. So, I.
But once, when, once that ordinance is done, goes ABC, ABC says, "Okay, we issue you a state permit." You bring the state permit to the city, the city will issue a city permit. But you're gonna go through this vetting process.
Right. Right.
They also, also they did the lease deed agreement, they, there were lots of things they didn't, never had to supply me, in order for me to take it to the next step.
Need a warrant.
The lease agreement.
You have it now.
No, I'm, she's got paperwork to get to, try to get it.
Top five, ABC.
As soon as I get it, I'm going forward to y'all, but I haven't been able to get it all.
Good.
She's trying. She's trying, she can turn heads and type two.
Unfortunately, you know, she is the first one to go through the process, and so there's lots of, of things that we have to learn, you have to learn, you know, that we'll get.
Sometimes she's got to go through the pain of it for you to first.
We've left all the verification of the city clerk from their resolution, so when Charlotte puts the ordinance on the agenda, then we'll deal with you.
I will have everything to the letter, that is required for y'all to see that ordinance.
So right now, she doesn't need anything from us.
No.
We have, we have changed our ordinance that deals in private clubs, licensing permits, whatever, to allow her establishment to be within the parameters of the footage restriction which is all Henry and hers, a couple of other restaurants. So she just needs to go and get, and I'm assuming that ABC knows exactly what she's looking for, because this, I mean, there's about eight hundred restaurants in the city of Conway, one in Little, a few in Marley, a bunch in Almond, a bunch in Vanier, one in Walgreen. So I mean, this isn't like we're red-bitten well here. Uh, I apologize that we have let you down, because for some reason we failed to tell you all this. I mean, I guess if you have a copy of the ordinance, it's all over there, but we should have been a little more forward and tell you, this is dismissed. So hopefully you have pretty much read letter what you need from the ABC and to bring back to us, because I'm tired of messing with this, so I mean.
Well, I think that, I think the, the big hangup is her dealing with your attorney to get that nonprofit established to show that you have been in business for a year or things like that. So that's a critical thing right there.
So, uh, the next thing that she will need from us is the ordinance, but I can't put that on the agenda until she's got all of the paperwork needing the requirements to do so.
Does you, you have, excuse me, you have our attorney?
Yes.
Can your attorney get with our attorney?
Yes, of course.
Would that be cool? I think that would help.
It's time to help.
And he can't charge us double fees, your attorney, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, I think that would help.
Yes, I think so.
Clarify some things.
Yes.
Because if your attorney is indeed, as Mr. Plummer described, a specialist, or if you will, in seeking these things, he should, he's got to know all that stuff, and that would help the process. And we could be more prepared, as Mr. Terry said, Terry said, for you. Okay, that good?
Yes.
Hey, Plummer, you, you grant our resolution one eighteen dash zero, like, application process. I just didn't know if you needed to make a forward.
Maybe on the website.
Charlotte's got it.
Now, I've got this, the application and all that.
What's the resolution over by?
One eighteen oh eight.
One eighteen oh eight.
And it seems good, it's just following the process.
That thing at the top of the application, of the, those numbers, it's on that, so it did.
Fee things are a little square, just giving them, if they come in half a year, it's seven hundred fifty dollars, if they come in a year, fifteen hundred.
There was something else.
I think, I think we're on the same page.
Probably the best thing to come from it tonight is the two attorneys we talked.
Yeah.
Maybe that all of their confidence about the topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Plummer. That thing on, the, the one thing on the application, which, again, I, we just need to follow our ordinance and then update this, it talks about fifteen hundred dollar fee, seven fifty if after July. The. Application, that's the permit fee. Well, that's, that's right for the permit fee. That's right for the permit fee, it's the application fee, right? Which maybe that doesn't even talk about that application fee here.
It does, it's, remains prorated as section thirteen states in the ordinance, there are no twenty-three.
The permit fee.
Yes.
But the application fee's fifteen hundred always.
I think, what I understood.
It's always fifteen.
They have not, they don't have that issue.
Once you get the state permit, you come back for the city permit, that's either the fifteen or the seven fifty.
Preventing wind?
Yes.
Are we all pretty good? But yes?
Yes.
Just making sure. Okay, thank you, appreciate you. You can explain all that back to the restaurant, right?
Not bad.
We'll have Travis stop me in the launch.
Okay, no problem.
Uh, okay, so, we will go to, what's listed as number one, council orders reviewing replacing orders fourteen dash ten, discharge of firearms inside city limits, first reading. Uh, I think, Mr. Maker, did you bring this, reviewing?
Yes. So there were a couple things. One was, um, I would like to get this ordinance a little bit more in line with what the game of fish businesses are. Uh, the other thing is, there's a couple mentioned, you know, hunting and lawful hunting areas mentioned in this ordinance, I'd like to go through. So what I'd like to do is, is allow, uh, the discharge of firearm at a hundred fifty yards and archery at fifty yards of occupied well.
Where, where are you?
Um, so, yes, so number seven.
Section two.
Session two. There's a hundred fifty yards and a minimum of ten acres. The distances associated with acres are real, real well. Ten acres, whether you scheme it long or square, I mean, it's really, the, the size of property is irrelevant, it's the distance that we're talking about, that's an inch or so, so from the structure.
Yeah. So you're on acre. So you're wanting to strike minimum?
On acreage.
Just, no acres though?
No acres.
Okay, so only a minimum of ten acres of war is out? That's what you're asking?
Yes.
And the hundred fifty yards is changed to what?
Not changed.
It's not changed.
How did you did ask, uh, uh, archery or something?
An archery.
An archery at fifty yards.
On the same, on number seven? Yes, archery at fifty. Let me ask real quick, and Chief, have you, did we talk about this a little bit before? Have y'all, have you got, Mr. Maker, are you familiar with what's?
I am, sir.
Okay, I, I mean, I just, obviously, as a police chief, you're okay, Mr. Maker?
Yeah. I recognize Mr. Maker being such a matter of expert on this, our research, along, he is correct on, on the restrictions on the footage, fifty yards, I believe it's fifty yards from a dwelling for archery, a hundred fifty for rifle or, or.
I don't know.
Only thing that we, a thing, Mr. Maker, that we discussed was, you wasn't wanting to allow firearms.
Yeah, so.
Right. By minimum thirty-five, the only, the only entity that can control hunting within the state is our, is our game and fish commission, by default, because many cities do not allow the discharge of a firearm, which oftentimes involves archery, then no hunting is allowed. The city can't say, no hunting, but in, in, in the essence of public safety, I mean, the city can say, no firearms, period. And so that's where the problems arise, especially with whitetail deer, is if there's no hunting, which they secure the whitetail deer. And so, from the game of fish thing, boy, I'm a little like game of fish hat on, we, we do not promote the discharge of guns inside city limits, but we do have opportunities through archery-only hunts to allow people to harvest deer inside city limits. And so that would be, my recommendation is, inside the city limits, I, I realize there are places on the edge for our city limits that are probably safe enough to discharge firearms, and, and I would offer that to be at the discretion of the police chief, that, um, you know, someone, um, you know, main, foreign main street, or, you know, there are places that you can discharge firearms, but there's a lot more places that you can safely discharge archery with. So I would, I mean, I would prefer that it would be at the discretion of the police chief to determine what site draws to, to mark firearms, not necessarily just bows. So, I mean, you know, a hundred and fifty yards, you know, that would be my recommendation of where the discretion of police chief.
And there's also, the big one that's going to limit, uh, safety issues, too, is this firing from, from, from the roadway. So you're almost limiting all, all residence areas by just the roadway, and I put that in your packet, you've got a certain distance, you've got to be in late in the roadway. Also, in this urban hunt that Mr. Maker speaks of, uh, you, per game of fish commission, before you can have a, a urban hunt, before a city can allow a game of fish to have an urban hunt, the hunter must complete all this stuff, you're basically a professional by the time. By the time you spend all the money to do this, and you've shot their qualifications to be able to do this urban hunt, you are very proficient in archery. So I would not think that would be an issue. My concern would be the firearms, and if you say, I'll leave it up to the police chief, or the chief of police, I think that leaves it open for discussion of, well, I, I don't think that's a good idea, sir. I think the council should make that decision, that way I can enforce the law. I don't need to be implementing my thoughts on who should hunt or who should be able to fire this, uh, plot around. I think that's a decision that y'all should make. My recommendation would, would be that you keep the firearms the way it is, I know we probably disagree a little bit on this, but I think that others for the annexation, you all allow them to continue shooting shotgun, if you own a ten acre or eleven for the land that was annexed out there, I think that's reasonable. Uh, but I wouldn't want that burden to be on me, and I wouldn't want that to, I wouldn't want to be the person that says, yes, you can, or yes, you can. It'd be difficult for me to enforce anything if that was the way for the record.
Well, I think if we stayed with the, the hundred and fifty yards.
Yes, sir.
With the firearm, or fifty yards with the archery, then that'd be.
Now, you see this fifty yard with the archery, but I think you've got two things going on, too, Robbie.
What's that?
You've got, section two, number seven, is talking about, uh, you know, target practice and trap shooting, blah, 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 a hundred fifty yards, ten acres. Then you got this section four, which is discharge for lawful hunting purposes, and it's talking about twenty acres and three hundred yards. I haven't found the fifty yards yet.
He said we're going to add it.
He's added it.
Okay, well, I don't find it.
Yes, sir, it's on the game of fish code book, it's, uh, it's zero point one one five on the game of fish.
That was, that was also, that was another, uh, another discrepancy, so section two is talking about target practice and trap shooting, section four is talking about hunting. Well, does it matter what the size of the property is, whether you're doing one or the other? I mean, it's still, it's still shooting, shooting, shooting.
Well, the only thing I figure is, somebody figures if you're target practicing, you're concentrating on targets up over there, still if you're shooting a running deer, you might be something.
I don't think you'd be shooting a running deer.
Yeah, so.
I don't know.
A hundred and fifty yards, that should get in regardless of the size, in whether you're target practicing, whether you're hunting.
And that's what's standard with the game of fish, is a hundred and fifty yards of firearm and fifty yards of archery.
Yes.
I think we should kind of apply, I mean, that's, you know, because we go along with the state in most things, you know, I think that's listed. Probably a silly question, is the archery, does that include crossbow, I mean, that was archery?
Hey, Robbie?
Yeah?
On section four C, it looks like a group, shotgun, bow and arrow crossbow, kind of together, so maybe shotgun and bow is fifty versus rifle, one fifty. I mean, you can't shoot a shotgun on fifty yards.
Yes, sir.
I guess you could shoot a slug.
Yeah, yeah, slug gun, that gun going three hundred yards.
Yes, sir.
So we, we just say.
Hundred fifty yards for all firearms.
So you want to change.
Shotgun needs to be taken out of C.
Well, is it?
And then?
Yeah, hundreds.
Fifty yards for shotgun, fifty yards for bow and crossbow.
You said, you said I'm saying, four C, discharge of shotgun, bow, arrow, crossbow for hunting purposes, and court of law, federal, state hunting laws. I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, that's, that's probably your, what you're.
It's discussed, five, five point one five in the back.
Yeah.
So should we say?
Yeah, five point one five.
Should we say, in compliance with our, our game of fish commission code book?
I mean, or is this, is this the code book, or is this, is there a state law that's?
Yeah, that's from the game of fish.
So should we say, like, that's what we reference then, instead of, or in addition to the capule federal state hunting laws, or say?
If, if I may, I, I believe this was brought up so we could help control the deer population with Mr. Maker, I believe, he wasn't, he wasn't trying to get firearms to be able to be shot in the, in the city limits, he was wanting to have his urban archery.
No, 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 that's completely different. So this, this urban deer hunt program is completely different than what we're trying to do. We're just trying to, to fix the ordinance to allow people to discharge archery equipment inside city limits. This urban hunt program is completely different. This is, this is going to bring people from all over the states to come and hunt inside city limits. This is not what we're trying to do. This is, this is completely different. We're just, we're just trying to allow people to shoot, the people who live here, to shoot their bow and arrow inside the city limits and whitetail deer.
Right. So the firearms portion of this would, would be stricken altogether, section four, basically, what I'm asking, it's a moot point if the council says, hey, we're not going to allow firearms, you're just going to allow the archery.
That's right, so the, the current ordinance allows firearm arms with certain restrictions. So target practice within a hundred fifty yards from occupied structure, uh, shotguns, hunting with shotgun on twenty acres, so there's, there's, there are decisions that got to be made, either we keep that in the current ordinance, or we just strictly firearms altogether and just allow people to shoot archery.
Yes, that was the point I was making.
Yeah, I like, I, I get what you're saying.
As it come into effect, it was predicted, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I kept it all, it was during annexation, Blavens out here, we were trying to annex him in, and he was worried about, you know, some of the shotgun and all that. So all this got added in, and it was a little bit to help our annexation fight, and after his pass, Bill Dawson called me and said, Mr. McMillan just sat up behind Westwood and started shooting targets with his AR-15, and there's moms coming to pick up their kids, and it's causing a big, and I was like, I don't know what they, so, you know, things like that do happen, and still, with this ordinance in place, it still allows Mr. McMillan, who's too old to do it anymore, because he's got a lot of acreage to set up. to set up right behind Westwood and start shooting his targets during the day. And that really does freak out a lot of moms. And, uh, I'd be okay with eliminating firearms. I like the idea of, you know, the archer, uh, urban archery or hunting.
One, one other thing before, uh, Mr. Maker, we both spoke, we would ask, I believe that you agree with me that we had asked that it not be allowed on the city property, here in the parks, uh, the trail around the lake. They have cross country running at the parks, uh, who knows who's going to be up the trail at any given time.
And that would be consistent with what most other cities have done. Is that three hundred yard consistent or is that?
Yes.
Three hundred yards consistent.
Do we not have a completely separate something about discharging firearms to property?
Uh, it's, it's this ordinance right here. The only, the only time you could, uh, shoot a firearm is would be if you had the ten acres or the twenty acres. It's actually strict, prohibited firearm in the city of, uh, section, section two, shall be outlawed. For any reason, with this, this target pistol, rifle, shotgun, and bow, uh, the corporate city limits, city limits agreement would accept for all these. Uh, I, I noticed that what's not on there is the firearms either. We potentially should put that on there and simply shoot out there.
Right.
Yes, sir. But it does, it does have school and trap, so it's probably.
Five by cover your firearms.
Uh, installation and in the schools and that.
I would say.
Mayor, can you see a permit?
Okay, are you going back and down with this question? You, you get almost completely, you get probably almost completely removed section four and just added number seven in section two and just, so your person engaged in, uh, discharge of archery equipment at least fifty yards from the occupied structure.
Well, you have to, uh, number, section two, four, you'd have to strike that, did that, person engaged lawful hunting is provided to your hand.
If you, if you took out all of section four.
Right.
But I think you want to leave the archery part in with section four for hunting. I mean, you're talking about target shootings, fifty yards archery, that would, that would be the one to add? Yeah, it would just be, it would just be fifty yards period. So, I mean, the, the ordinance does not need to say anything about that because the city can't, can't regulate that, tell people to get out of there. You just say you can't discharge your archery equipment within fifty yards without your permission. So we, so you strike the target practice and trap shooting, uh.
It would not allow.
Yeah, it would not allow, period, in accordance with the. Well, strike that as a, uh, archery or add archery.
I think we keep getting confused as the sections and.
I just allow guns, though, as long as you've got your hundred and fifty yards.
I would say it's open.
Because just like Jim, a lot of times you're like, person that had a gun, you know, out there next to the school, he was a hundred and fifty yards away, that sure made a lot of noise and scared a lot.
What is this?
It's a lot easier to make a mistake with.
Yes, with a firearm than a deer. Just for the heck of it, how far is it? Thirty out six, we hear about in America, it's got.
We can go a long.
That's like a mile.
Over miles.
So.
I would say other open door is box for calls and responses to calls. Uh, we have a school and churches there laid out where he will, and they will, constantly be getting calls about firearms in the job. Uh, and you would have to look best care at each one of those. Unless you knew, hey, that's, it's coming from seventy one, uh, you know, close, close by, uh, that area where there's no residents.
Mr. that, I live on right off ten out there, obviously, and I know on the other side of there's outside the city limits, they definitely deer, and I back up and ask them, they'll give answers. So I hear rifle every other night near deer season, and I know, I don't worry it's at, but that could easily travel over my, and we can't do anything about it. But the ones that we can do something about, I think we should. Well, I'd say this, I mean, what we've got on the list, that, I, I make a motion to, I get with.
I'll straighten it out.
Let's straighten this out and kind of use the draft.
Do you want to just like, disable it?
Yes. Well, I need to say, uh, let's go to the first reading, title only, and then we keep going, you know, saying, the second reading will be from you, and I can fix it up a little bit, that way get the process going.
I say, take these motions.
Motion second.
Oh, sir.
Sorry, you have a motion?
You have a retract.
I retract it. Okay, so motion is second to table until that can get, or no, I'm sorry, first read.
Yeah, do the first read on the, uh.
Knowing that they're going to get together, go to the chief.
Yes, sir.
And second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Raywater.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Dinevus. The ordinance regulating the discharge of firearms and guns, air guns, pellet guns, bows, and similar weapons in the corporate, city, federal, and private. Providing penalties, providing repeal of existing ordinances or section of ordinances in conflict with declaring an emergency and for other purposes, although I don't think you want an emergency law.
No.
So we strike that and we really don't have a new ordinance, I just basically read the existing ordinance's title, but okay, there's, we, kind of different.
We go through.
Yeah, and I read the title, but I technically read just the title of the existing ordinance. Just let the record show. It's.
Well, we're going to probably use that one to replace the changes. Yeah. So number two is water wastewater commission, ordinance repealing replacing ordinance number twelve, six, and twelve nine, adjusting water rate second reading. Tracy, you want to?
Are you, excuse me, are you request, Travis, the attorney went through this and made some changes as requested. Uh, the main issue is the section two, and I believe you highlighted those rights.
Is I highlighted whatever was changed since Travis?
And in section four, uh, we also changed mostly wording, there was worth increase of two percent for the user inside the municipal, municipal boundary of the city of Greenwood. And obviously this includes all of our, uh, users, including those outside city limits, the land has been stricken and we just consent with the change of, uh, taking that out and consent with the change of the CPI, the consumer price index for all users annually. And then also the next paragraph, well, is that paragraph also gives, um, us the leeway to go ahead and increase according to CPI or do nothing if it's not necessary.
You, you don't want to jump in here?
Yes.
They, they tasked me with articulating what the commission wanted at this time, and the two percent that was in there was an all or nothing, it was two percent period. But the, the concern of the com, of commission was, what if it's eight percent CPI? What if it's four? What if it's one? This was two percent period and on the bottom, the council had the ability to forego, that was it. Didn't say you could reduce it, said you either have it or you don't. And they wanted the latitude to allow for discretion to maybe reduce it lower than the CPI, use something other than it or forego it, and to put language in there that gives them the ability to recommend to you what is needed from the CPI as well as the revenue streams that they have and give you a recommendation for what increase they need. So this language gives you the ability to allow.
Give us more latitude if.
So will, so the council vote, uh, upon the recommendation of the water wastewater commission?
Right, it gives you the ability, you don't even have to follow the, for this, you could say now, or you could say half.
Yes, I thought the commission person would bring it to you for, for, uh.
In addition to, if the shutty comments are not, uh, there's a, like, section two, that was requested last time, first reading, because, uh, the sewer ordinance had it and y'all lined it in, in the bottom as well, so that's what we did there. And, uh, mimicked on section one, that wouldn't change part to the extent of any conflict here, but was just, I'm just making them consistent, in other words, if that's okay with Travis. If it fits, or.
It's a little bit of a third program.
Make motion to adopt the ordinance with the changes made.
They're on second reading.
By title only. Second. Motion second.
Before we vote, I, I just can be, if you can give me a Leighton's economics for Betties one oh one, consumer price index.
That's your rate of inflation, basically. Uh, it takes out certain things that the, the COLA would, you're probably used to COLA, but the consumer price index can have, see, the, the deal is, we worded it that way specific because it's an inflationary factor, which is what we used in the water rate segment. However, it doesn't tell you which consumer price index I'm here to use. You know, some municipalities that use regionalized CPI. So this by the wording allows you the ability to say, well, we're going to go with instead of the national CPI, but that's influenced by high cost areas of the country. The Arkansas, the southern region CPI.
I'd like for us to be specific about it.
Like, you like?
I'd like for us to be specific about what CPI we're going to use.
I, I, because.
We all come back, nobody, I thought this, and you.
Then you lock yourself into it.
Last year, when we were talking about the, uh, volatility prices, we used, we adopted the original CPI.
Arkansas. This year, we need.
Our calling. And so I think this could give us this ability too to say, hey, if it's really skewed because of, of east coast, west coast numbers, again, so okay, we can use the regional.
I mean theoretically though, our cost, our personnel cost and those kind of things are here. We're not buying chemicals in California.
Well, actually. Yeah. Some of our products, yeah.
I spoke with my chemical vendor lately, and, uh, there are two companies that own corny docks nationwide, and they are moving to standardized prices nationwide. So we will be paying for corn sold outside, where in the state of California, we'll be paying. That's, uh, part of the reason why our chemical costs of business much the last few years.
I didn't know the, uh, Ozark.
And use the national CPI.
Ozark uses southern, Ozark, Mary, she uses the southern.
And this thing we should say, we're using the national CPI, so there's no debate about that next year, we'll all forget, but then.
You can always retell the ordinance to, and try and do it anytime.
If you use the national, then we have, we have the ability to.
Another fifteen years.
Mr. You guys have the ability to say, we're going to reduce that. Nation, if you use the national, you're at the highest level. So you could say, we're going to reduce it, and we're reducing it maybe based on the southern states, and you think it's more reasonable. The reason is, um, if you use the national all the time outside of what you're saying, uh, because that's true, the argument back to you would be, well, it doesn't cost us that much here, why are you, why are you raising the rates for a pad or the national CPI? But like I said, if you, if you stipulate national CPI, you in the wording here have the ability to reduce it.
We're going to have to justify whatever we did, I mean, obviously.
Let's set the national CPI as your benchmark.
Right.
And like Tom said, we can wiggle.
But I think for our guys, they're having by parts from all over the United States, even some foreign entities and, you know, we, so to say it doesn't cost that much here is not really an accurate picture of what.
But I, I, I still say that when most people just say CPI, they, they know that it's just a.
The national.
It's a, yeah, it's a national.
That's what's, that's what's.
It's just a.
傳到the media and.
Yeah, the media, of course, under a.
So I did this, I didn't realize it was a southern one, and I know that Ozark, the city of Ozark uses, uh, southern CPI, but I, they are contemplating, because there's such a big difference, they're contemplating changing theirs.
I agree.
So we can make a motion to passes for second reading, replacing CPI in section three to national CPI.
Right. Only we have a national tour already, we haven't acted yet.
I said, I said with amendment change, with amendment, so if you want to put that in there too, uh, then we'll put that in there.
It's in section three.
Section three.
And section four.
So what is your amendment motion, your emotion at first, I was just going to put it on second reading by that one.
I said.
We're talking about water sewer right now.
I, I guess by, uh, title only with the changes made.
And that's just the CPI, right? Is that the only?
Well, no, we got these other things that you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, as it was in.
But with this CPI change?
With this CPI change, you have national in front of CPI.
Gotcha. And national. All right.
We have motion.
Yes, in a second.
Second.
Yeah. Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Frank Waterman.
Yes.
And Frank Daniel.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dinevus. Now we're just adopting an increase in water rates for the municipal ordinances, twelve dash oh six and twelve dash oh nine, and Frank first.
Thank you. Uh, we just, we need to do twelve ten. What do you do with water, which is water waste?
Yeah, we need to do it.
Yeah, we need to do it with the, uh, considerate. So number three is.
So same, same.
Okay. I make a motion, we did, again, with the title only with the changes made, including the national. Yeah.
No second.
Motion second.
We have the, the three and up or down.
Open water sewer?
Yes.
Did we, did we have a ten day notice in the paper before the meeting? Uh, will we publish it? Yeah.
Pablo says that Pablo carrying, um, the way we normally send out meeting notices. Is there a requirement supposed to in the paper?
It's like, I haven't had that. We love it so much.
We'll have to have it in the.
If there's not, we'll read for distribution.
General circulation.
General circulation.
General, so they'll be this value. God, we have, just for sewer, not water.
I would say specific to sewer.
Yes.
Does, does the, uh, not, not putting it on Facebook, uh, is that not acceptable?
One thing.
Not according to what we do.
Probably should be updated to have to say social media, this is.
Yeah, it's going to.
Why is it just sewer and not?
Yeah, it's weird.
It stinks.
I read that.
Well, I think, I think we have talked amongst ourselves that we would like to maybe have another kind of just informational meeting. After this gets out, people probably want to know more. I mean, most of the people that were here today were from shadow raids.
Yes, yes, sir.
Could you talk to do it the same way in six o'clock before the next, uh, January eighth council meeting?
Hmm.
You do it before that, because you've got a January one break to change, or is it there where you'd like it to be?
With, with water and sewer.
How many days do that do?
Thursday, Thursday.
Ten days.
Ten days.
How big is the newspaper for ten days property, the day of year?
I was saying, if we could have a meeting, maybe in, do it a little bit later, seven o'clock, separate, maybe, maybe in the.
It would have to be before the eve of Christmas.
After that, everybody's like, between Christmas and New Year's, you can't anybody. After that, everybody's like, between Christmas and New Year's, you can't anybody.
Three ice, no forecast, and you can those nights clock for us.
We could do it.
Three ice, no forecast, and you can, can run things through a little while.
Thomas, that wasn't said.
Tom lives here, so it doesn't matter.
Thomas, you did so good with the presentation, I think, one more time.
That was the event that, that, yeah, for seven to eighteen.
So does that make sense, I mean?
That would fly.
Do we have time to get it in a newspaper?
Yeah, there is time.
Put it to a night.
Again, all the days when we failed to, you know, law.
I thought those publications, I thought social media was acceptable a lot. Well, they came out with, with certain notices for certain things, that is acceptable.
Specific to sewer.
Yeah.
Uh, the twenty first, Thursday the twenty first. Or the twentieth, Wednesday the twentieth.
I probably.
Wednesday, maybe Thursday, I don't know. What, what is commissioned? You're the only one here, so why you have your almost commission.
I mean, we need to get it in by Friday, probably.
Monday is cut off.
Monday?
Monday and noon. So if you get it in Monday, noon, it'll, it'll come out on thirteen. And that would, then your ten days will start.
And we'd have to have the meeting on the twenty seventh or twenty eighth.
We haven't.
That's probably.
That's tough.
That's between Christmas and New Year's.
I know, that's right.
Those presenters won't.
Last year, and just not do January first, if you may, please put it in.
Yeah.
I wish.
Twenty first. Theresa, twenty first.
Yeah, we could do that now. Not sure whether anybody can help. That's fine.
I thought, I thought he, so his son, he said that wouldn't be the, in the right timeline, though. I thought he said thirteen.
Monday is when they tell me that is the deadline.
What paper are we talking about?
President Chris was the one.
President Chris was.
Thomas, that's, or Thomas, I know that's not your paper, but it's not right to you.
Does it include?
He's a paper man, you know.
I'm trying to get Thomas on there, put a paper in.
Yeah, it has to be the twenty, twenty first, twenty second and Friday.
Find out the deadline and then go from there.
But it's not a meeting.
Ten days for President Chris.
It's Monday.
So Sonny's right, put it down, Monday noon. So does that work for the twenty first, Monday noon?
She wants it.
That's what I'm asking. You represent, have a certain circulation in the county.
Yeah, that's the big number. It's where it publishes and it's printed.
Well, I mean, down there on Christmas Eve.
I, I would, I'm going to find out tomorrow. Then they can publish it and then get back to Theresa and everybody about it.
The town president's the option.
Take it out.
That didn't buy yet on.
I thought he was.
No. We have the motion, we can go ahead with the second reading on this. As the third reading will be back in, because January eighth is our next meeting. So the rate's effective January first in this is gonna have to change. Unless we have an emergency meeting and do it.
Yeah, just easier to move the rate from that day one.
It's possible.
Or not.
Do us.
The rate change, is that, is that?
We may have to.
Had to be the first.
Do you want to have a special meeting for the second day we have the period?
Why not?
Of the city council to do the third reading, so that you can meet that January first deadline. But there's still, I mean, not still getting fixed, thirty days past the date. It's still gonna be past January first.
Yeah, there's a timeline. Is it like Charlotte proposing the whole, the asshole, the last reading? Is there, how many days is there on that?
Well, you can adopt an emergency clause and go, go away with that thirty day.
You kind of like doing two technical ones.
You understand, I mean, can they, can they adopt an emergency clause on a third reading and or rather the thirty day wait? Has the adoption date.
That's the reasonable day of meeting.
Effective date, no?
The only thing about an emergency clause, any kind, when you're doing a rate change. Not when it's not an emergency, it's not great for people.
So that, that January first date may not make it more.
It delays your capital spends on the projects, is what it's doing, if that adds costs, so.
You're saying you have to set your rate.
We have to do it by February first. We need to do it by.
I was talking to you all day.
It's February first.
If they do that, we're gonna have to have a meeting in December, because it's thirty days, effective thirty days past the adoption date.
So we're back.
February we do, for, for, now, February we do, actually, January is.
From January, we're too deep a order. So just trying not to get this straggl out in spring and March, you know, careful.
I'm doing one experience starts.
We've got to get mailers out, we've got a lot of.
I think we're right back to, we're trying to figure out sometime in December to get this done.
Yeah, let's find out publication.
So find out.
The notice of date and go from there.
Let's get those as early as we can.
I've searched with Tom's record.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
We just don't know, we're just gonna have to understand that the target date of January first may not be that.
Okay.
Right, so we have that motion.
Motion, second, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymore?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
James, um, I know we're just adopting any increase in sewer rates for healing ordinance, but I'll bench dinner for others.
All right, so moving on, with council's approval, I want to skip number four and try to get all these other ones in.
Uh-uh. I mean, no thank you, please.
What do you guys think?
I have to be in Little Rocket eight in the morning, if I could please go.
Okay. Move it down to nineteen. I can't override the council with, please come to the podium, Mrs. Smith. Number four, you have statute. Resolution to adopt personnel policy. Would you like me to?
Hey, so I asked you all to, if you could look over it before this evening, if you've got time. You'll notice all the changes are either changed or struck through. Anybody have any questions? Mrs. McDaniel was the only response I received from the email question, adding more days to the vacation. And I will state again that all these changes were made during multiple meetings with all department heads of the city and the mayor. So they're not just coming from, from my office or just from the mayor, it's from, you know, the whole group collectively with their suggestions.
I'm agreeing with, uh, Mr. McDaniel as far as leaving the vacation, but it is the same.
Okay. The only thought to that was just to try to, you know, help with retention and, you know, employees who have been here and longevity and things like that. But that was just a suggestion, so we can just keep that the same, if that's what you'd like.
Rest of council, on that one point, if anyone did, keep it, I'm gonna keep it.
Should I express it without sounding like real?
Yes, just nod.
No, that'd be two meetings in a row.
I'm not, you can say you kind of.
I'd like to suggest crying.
Oh, you went all out.
Well, I mean, it was just.
That's fine, we can just do the same.
I think that sounds well.
I can hear with him.
I, I get it, thank you.
Roger, you want Peter, what's her name?
Everybody else is awesome, thank you for everything of all this.
And, and she is correct about what she said, this is always, this is a department head meeting, when we talk about this.
A lot of this is just, you know, correcting the market, the verbiage and things like that.
Anything else I make other question?
Other questions?
I make, I make a motion, we, uh, adopt the, using the resolutions to adopt the personnel, any changes excluding the, uh, vacation benefits.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymore?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
James. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Going home now, I think that's fair.
Yes.
Make a motion.
I concur, I concur.
Be safe.
Can I get more coffee?
Okay, I'll go back and, mostly.
You won't, so she's there. Sir? Oh, yeah, that's true. So we're gonna go to.
Saturday's late.
Yeah. Resolution to accept purchase of property from Burgess Living Trust agreement about next project. Uh, so you have a real estate purchase agreement in your packet that Mr. Plummer has, uh, patented with the instructions of the Burgess family, correct, kind of sort of, okay. I will say, and I'm, and I'm happy with it, I'm really kind of happy, really happy with it, because of the, as you know, back when Dr. Burgess was still with us, we had a letter of intent, I guess, from Dr. Burgess stating that he wanted us to be able to get that bypass built. And he said many times to me, he wanted it done before he left this earth. And he looked at me one day up and down, he said, we might have kind of been good before you looked at this earth. And I was looking pretty old, and I guess I was. But in respect to him, we, we're getting there very, very close to put a shovel on the ground. So we never sealed the deal with the Burgess family on what was then estimated at twenty acres of property that we would need for said easements. Pretty good guess, seven years ago, because it turned out to be approximately twenty six, I think the contract says twenty seven acres. Or at least that's what the Burgess family now has agreed by this document, that we can purchase twenty seven acres for that easement. Four, four thousand per acre, I had told Burgess family all along that anything over the twenty that we originally agreed to, that was kind of to them to tell us what they wanted for the remainder of that. So they've agreed to four thousand per acre twenty seven, but then it also goes on to say, and I refer, I refer to these other pieces as slivers of property, or dock counted as too sometimes, but there's other properties or pieces of property that, uh, due to the, due to the ride of weight lines, and this is my version, my way of saying it is that leaves some of this property unusable. So they've also agreed in this document, if I'm right, Mr. Plummer, to purchase that property when we, if we need to, up to five acres for the exact same price. So they've not raised, they're not charging us any more for any other property we need more than the original twenty acres that we thought we would need. So, yes, sir.
Ever agreed to purchase any property rendered unusable.
Right.
As a, as a function of this project.
Correct, yes. So the only thing here, and I haven't really got to speak to Mr. Plummer, I did, I did say to him that if, uh, Hunter was here, he had some questions and or thoughts, and it was in regard to the floodplain, uh, let's see what, you know what that is, Travis?
An addendum.
Sir?
An addendum.
Addendum. So. Yeah.
On the four.
On the four. Yeah, the sellers are requesting exceptions to the floodplain zoning ordinance, which is what we, is our ordinance that was enacted by the city prior to this agreement without notice to the seller. Approval by the city agreement will allow the James A. Burgess Jr., Mayor J. Burgess Living Trust to fill the land between the new bypass and existing Highway ten for commercial use upon the completion of the bypass project. The seller understands that we know required, no, will be other required approvals from the state and that the city agreement has no control over those. Emergency agreement is also requested to permit any questions, server, or access to the land, future commercial development. Hunter is a little bit concerned, if he's our floodplain manager, his concern is if we waive, if you will, requiring them to follow set ordinance. And, and so, so everybody knows what we're talking about, the existing ten right here by City Hall that goes east. Between that and the new bypass that's gonna run parallel across dock property, that's where they want to, that someday develop. And if we allow that to be filled up, without using our own ordinance to govern that, we are then responsible someday if it causes flooding somewhere else. That's on us, we've allowed that to happen.
There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, so.
The thing, Mayor, though, I mean, I don't know all this, of course, but I think there's an offset. If you fill this much, you gotta take this much off the other side of there, you know?
Yeah, and the court, and the court on that, so the court engineers, court and Hunter, uh, they don't really, they don't get into that. They get into that when you're in the creek. So they're not gonna come in and override us or Hunter, or even say, you can't do it, this is coming from Hunter, I'm, I'm gonna be singing pride. But, so it's really on us, and I'm, I'm re, I'm very excited and anxious to get these folks paid.
What we're doing, I do it the kind way, essentially, is taking what you have right now, backing it up, that's number B. The same dam, you know.
Levy, whatever you want.
Levy. We're backing another levy up there, and if they're not able to fill it, you just render nine acres. Deuces. They just lost nine acres to a fish.
Well, I, and I'm not arguing.
Which obviously would, you know, if the two creeks fill up the water.
Which can fill up there. And we've all seen that. It does go over our head to, I think, to a degree, I, I, but who, who decides that, I don't know, I mean, I'm, you mean not the water, but the.
Let me ask.
Yeah, that's not us.
We have.
All our ordinance, so our, I'm sorry, so our ordinance that they're referring to, and Hunter was referring to, does now, we recently did it, does not allow anybody to fill in dirt in a floodplain or a floodway, nobody's heard it happen here.
Except for the state, you know, building.
Yeah, in, in the state.
What state?
I don't know. So people have asked me before, as I'm, I'm sure you have wondered, if we're gonna build another levy, what damage are we gonna do? Well, our dot, that's our dot, you know, we're, we're allowing it, but they certainly, I would assume, I know what that means too, that they've done their work, their engineers, they're, they're checking all this out, and they have a plan, so.
It's not gonna be a bridge to bypass the entire.
No, absolutely not. Now, I can't tell you that it's gonna be earth, how much of it's earth, but from what I'm hearing from the folks that have gotten a bid on this project, Crawford and whoever else that combined, they're planning on moving it off, they would anyway, even if it was just the bridges, there's a lot of material to be moved, and some of it, the Burgess family is planning on none of our business. They're gonna bring it off of their own property. And then there's, there's material from behind the Davis gym that's going, there's property, probably, material, I said property, there's probably material out across Highway ten from us at the new senior center. That's kind of a rigor, but a little more, so they're, they're taking a lot of material over there.
I had this vision of a levy or a bank road.
I had this vision of a levy or a path road, obviously gonna see.
Right.
But I was thinking of some sort of maybe an under, an overpass situation in part of that, where they would have access to the pasture.
So there is that.
Between the two.
There is that, and that was something about.
Like somebody mowed.
Yeah, so, I think you're definitely right.
Now, they could.
Well, there's ac- there's access to it.
What allows the state to do that is mitigation.
Right, right.
When you're building a flood, front, front, front zone.
They go somewhere else and.
They, yes, they, they correct it somewhere else, and so that's what, what we had discussed, since they're building there, and they've got to have those mitigation credits anyway.
Right.
To, to maybe improve that waterway for some kind of boat or fishing access.
Right.
Right there inside the city.
And so. The interesting thing about that, I asked one of the engineers, 'cause shortly after the water went over the bridge right here, you know, and even see, how, how you gonna build this thing, you know, in relation to this, four inches lower than this road right now, which blows my mind, I mean, I would've thought it'd have been two feet higher than this road, but it's actually lower.
Well, when you say this road, you're talking about the, the bridge, where it goes over the bridge, or you're talking about where it comes down at in the river?
Between the bridges, the elevation between the bridges, where the median is now, the new road is actually a little lower than the.
The one that you drive on now. I asked that same question.
I'm not an engineer, so I'm not.
And I'm not trying to discredit that, I asked the same question, 'cause you told me that, and I asked another engineer who's, obviously, there are many engineers on this thing, and this guy looked at me and goes, I don't.
Well, that can be lowered, it's all the water that we discussed, on that flood you're talking about will now go back into water because all of the deals, it's way more than anything.
We don't know.
I, I wanna make one comment about this.
Before you do that, real quick, to, to, to not answer, but these, this bridge literally right outside this door, and that bridge down there is, are gonna be demolished, and we get two new bridges that are longer, so there'll be more water flow underneath both of those bridges going that direction. Now, I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not an engineer, how much does that help out enough? But as we all know, we have issues, and we're working with them, I won't get into the whole flood thing, but, I mean, not for Jappy, Colonel Gibbons, they're looking downstream to see if there's something stopped. But to your point, I understand what you're saying, but supposedly, not supposedly, we are getting two new bridges, plus three, that's gonna help, well.
Well, I would say, when you take away a lot of area where water stands during high, heavy rain runs, and put a hundred-foot wide street, that's taking away from that water standing.
That water could go all the way to Ford Brown's house.
Right, and, and I witnessed that I, some of us here, yeah, came across here, but you know, we've said, I've said, once or twice, go over, said, ten, ten east, you know, over in the, or into.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't know how they, I don't know how they're gonna fix this, but one of the problems you have today, of Hartson Creek, right, what was that called? It's behind the bank, just up there, and then Adamson Creek, is over there by, you know, by the strip pit, on the lawn. So you got Hartson Creek, hits Adamson Creek backwards right now, what's happening. So, when, in those big rain events, you know, these, these creeks aren't merging together, if you will, they're colliding together. And so, all of that's getting redone somehow, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would assume that's gonna help that situation, because when those creeks collide today, it goes right out in a fast manner.
Not, not to mention, and I think everybody knows this, but, so not counting these two bridges that will be obliterated, is what the, what the paper said, and replaced, you got three brand-new bridges to address said issues, flood issues, on Doc's property all the way across, you got one down here, parallel to, in front of the sewer plant, that Greg thought was coming in his front door, but it's closed, and then another one, and then another one, before you ever get things up, so five bridges, all correctly, all to help.
I still think the court would've been better off to bring Riley and Hartson back there, take away that horseshoe, give it a little head of bridge, and have you out.
Well, I brought that up a couple of years ago, whenever people felt, if you don't invest
in corporate engineers, well, I get that, but it seems like if you have that, it's for everybody.
Yeah, I'll tell you too, I mean, I'll just add to your, this conversation, you can go ahead and lobby us, that, that is an issue for Indian Hills Westwood, that, that right there, probably, I'm not, I'm not real sharp, but that's probably eighty percent of why that flood is, because it literally, it has no, you know, other than, other than buying back the property from John Van Porter and having a river with, that's a big, I don't know how that's ever fixed.
Well, we put that bridge in on Denver, and then cleaned out the stuff there by the one, two plus pound wide that ditch, and that helped a whole lot.
It does.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, but, but, yeah.
To your point, I mean, these bridges.
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't, I don't, we're not gonna fix or, or undo what RDOT's planning, it's, it's rolling. That was Hunter's, he brought that to my attention, I said, thanks, Law Hunter, but I, I feel, I feel very confident, and I think you just said a while ago, of the plan of, I guess, back to whoever said it a while ago, I was kinda worried that our own ordinance, we just said, okay, we do whatever you want to do, and I don't think that's what they're asking. I mean, I like this, this agreement, one, I like the fact that everything's still pulled out of dollars maker.
Well, I'm still kinda confused, when you say, they're wanting the, the south side of Center Street to be, still, be able to, be developed or something?
They wanna be able to develop, if you go right out here where Dr. Burgess' gate is, and goes into his pasture, right across from Joe Carmer, they wanna develop from there someday, they want the idea of developing from there over to the new highway, because it'll run parallel, it's gonna, I think it leaves about seven acres-ish. And they want, their thought is that they could bring that up somewhat, I don't know what they're talking about, but, you know, they, and they don't have, I've not seen it, a, a real plan of that yet, I think they're just talking, so that's, that's where they're talking about someday.
So they're basically. They asked us for a variance right now, or this whole deal shop, we didn't tell them that's not what's going.
Is there what?
They're like asking for basically a variance right now, or ordinance for what they might do in fifty years.
I think the way it reads, unless I'm wrong, and I don't wanna slow this down, I don't, absolutely don't want to, but it kinda reads that way, that's what, that's what Hunter's afraid of.
Is, are not.
Yeah, and, but, but it says, other permits, you know, if we say it's okay, court or somebody might go, no, that's not okay. And, and they know, I talked to the family, and I know Daniel, has, the family has said to me very clearly, that's what we'd like to do, if we can't, we can't. Now, RDOT will not allow, I'll tell you this, RDOT will not allow off of the new highway, which will run parallel to a degree before it cuts over to Pinkwood, they will not allow any access to businesses off of their new ru-, their new highway. They will allow access to the pasture land, but they're not gonna let them build, if they build anything, it would have to come off of what will soon be our, our street.
Our main street.
Our main street.
There's the bottom line of the deal, without speaking on that, on their path. It's steeply discounted to the city.
Yeah.
We all realize. They're saying, if, if we could take this land between these two roads, build it up, and have retail space, that you access off of Center Street, not off of the new highway, you would access, you know, your extending Center Street, we could probably recover some money on this deal. If we can't, we just lost another seven or nine acres, that's unusable land to us at this point.
Larger than it is currently right there.
Other, other than patches.
It's unusable right there.
Yeah, other than patches. And so, yeah, that's one of my points, is they, they will have access because it's written in here, and I think.
Well, it's, it, it becomes an island in between two roads and two creeks.
Yeah, but you have, they have access to it.
You got a culvert over a five-lane highway, I mean, you can't run it.
I thought, yeah, I thought they were gonna have access underneath.
They're cattle, and I haven't, I don't have Jared Wilder here in front of us, but I was assured that they would be able to literally run cattle if they wanted to, back pasture to the, to the middle pasture.
That's what my understanding too.
My understanding is that's over further behind the bank.
Well, it would, wherever it is.
This part not being.
Yeah, wherever it is, though, they would be able to, and I may, I may be off, but wherever it is, it could be behind the bank, it could be Miss Betty's or somebody, but.
Because RDOT said, you know, RDOT said to us, that's, they've got a word for it, basically, if we cut it off.
Yeah, it's, it's an.
We're not cutting it off, we're gonna put a gate there, on problem, you can get to it, you can access it. So, in our view, in our, our, our DOT's view, we have not created this island that you can access, technically, you can get to it.
And so, let's, for just for a second, too, and I'm not a cattle guy, but if I were a cattle guy, and that became seven acres or nine acres of blocked off, there is no under-road, but right now, what, what, not the Burgess', but what, they rent that to Kelly Clark, he, he, he gets to that property off of Ten, that would not change, you can go in, and I'm not saying it's convenient, but you could certainly go in and out of there with a trailer and raise cattle on seven acres.
But I, I guess that was, all of it, yeah, that was going to have access underneath the five lanes.
So, I mean, I think we're overthinking it, but just, I mean, the gist of it is, we don't know how this could end up, and so, we want the ability to, you guys work with us so we can.
Does, does RDOT approve of this, I mean, I mean, can we?
They're waiting. They, they are waiting on this, they, they, RDOT is, they're calling, Daniel's the owner, but they call us fairly often to say, where are the Burgess', and I had, I was talking to Roseanne yesterday, 'cause they had a family meeting, and they were asking us out, whether they full, or whether they was, this contract, and I, James Ward, who is the RDOT guru of all these slivers that I'm calling the property, so I had them, they conversed each other, I stayed off of it, 'cause I didn't want to get in the way, so, after that call, that's when this got produced, I'm assuming they conversed with you about that. So to answer your question, yeah, they, they definitely know, and they're, they're anxious because I think they've done their due diligence, and I don't know about the son, the son of Lodge or anything, I don't know if everybody's satisfied. You know, I know Sean Lynn has been approached, he's, he's good, and stuff, I don't know about everybody else, but they're doing all that, because all, our only responsibility easement-wise is, was the Burgess property, everything else followed on RDOT. So, did I answer, was that what you asked?
So, so, I mean, if, I said, R, so, item six, we're acquiring the Burgess property, with the exception of that seven acres on the.
Well, we're requiring what, there's your highway relocated, right? So, is that, I don't think it's our, yeah, so what we're requiring is twenty-seven acres of the highway, and he, right away to go with it.
So we're requiring that, so I guess what I'm saying, then going back to five, we're giving them an easement to our property where the water part is, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we're gonna be donating, that's what's next on the agenda.
So do we have to do that also for the Burgess property, after we acquire the Burgess property, do you have to give the RDOT easement over that property too?
Yeah.
So is that, here, or we have another?
I think we're waiting on this, but I don't think it's all.
There's no way we can have it yet.
We can't.
We don't have land yet.
Yeah, can't have it.
RDOT has to give.
Kinda like that whole looking thing, we gotta get.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think it's RDOT. Earlier, Mayor, was about these easements. If, you kinda gotta look close on that map, but there's some circles.
Yeah.
There's some, when Doc donated the land for the walking trail, that would've been Eric Campbell?
Yes. Yeah, this is Gary Campbell.
He was, he was promised, you're gonna have these easements in writing, so that you could get to these gates.
That's true.
To this day, it's never been done.
That's true.
So, Mr. Plummer, I'm asking, in your legal description that you put, can you make certain that those access points are documented?
Or? I see three circles, the one part about.
Yes.
Those, the circles are the current gates.
Right, right.
Those squares are, those would be the access points off the new highway.
Right.
Which may technically be RDOT.
That is one thing coming on RDOT, I guess.
Yeah, sure.
The new, the new ones, yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe the one on Main Street, on another building.
Yeah, it's part of it.
If you go to item two, it says it's our responsibility to fix it.
No, no, yeah, fixing, let's only tell you what RDOT says to me, Jared Wilder. Where's item two, show me what you're saying, oh, you told I didn't know.
In the addendum one, it says we'll build fence and if it gets blown down, we'll build it.
If they, if RDOT does not, yeah, their, their, the Burgess family is saying, if RDOT doesn't do it, it's on us.
It's on us.
And I, and I told them we would, I mean, absolutely.
It's the smallest one as well.
Yeah, 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 but RDOT, RDOT is doing it. They are, they've made it very, very clear to me many times.
And for what it's worth to you, I don't know, I think I hear that's okay, I'll tell you this. The House of the Forty's got that lot over there, that's Highway, Highway, whatever they, they're, 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 a thirty-acre, thirty, thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty feet strip off that lot, anyone wanna come up?
Yes.
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
Shares and all, or?
They're paying us forty-seven thousand dollars for that thirty foot here.
So this is Pete's Cave?
That's the new, what's my point?
Is this, that floodplain here, you're talking about the one?
The forty-seven thousand dollars. I mean, that guy's got a big ditch, you have to do it.
Is it a floodplain?
No, it couldn't be, it's, it's amazing what's in the flood.
Oh, I know, I know. It's a major remaining, Pete's Cave.
Yeah, the prices.
All right, Daniel?
Ridiculous with you.
You know, on your map, you've got those three circles, do they got one, access right over here off of, uh, uh, Cobra Street?
Yeah.
Little, little part.
That, that is access.
That is access already?
Yeah, that's current access.
Yeah, okay.
But ultimately to a street per se.
Which is access.
It's, it's between the house and the pharmacy, right?
Yeah.
That little road between the house and the pharmacy.
Let's take us on that, this little.
So that piece of land, that, that little piece, just, which is why the conversation came up with RDOT that day, was, you're chopping off this little triangle over here, you know, it's getting kinda chopped out of the farm, and that's where they said, not our problem, you have access.
Yes.
So, as far as we're concerned, we haven't chopped anything off, you still have access to the farm. And, yeah, which is makes sense, I mean, you can make a part of it, and that makes sense, because there's, it's really not, it, you lost it as part of, of a cattle farm, but you still got it, and you can drive to it. So that would not be a city access.
You talked to three?
Sorry.
Stuff behind, better on chase.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are these access points?
So, just to clarify, Daniel, you're wanting what, legal descriptions?
The these, the little circles, or the boxes? Yeah, the circles. The boxes, I think you're right, are RDOT's.
Cause things are already bronsted, and they need to be done. Right.
Sir?
Things are already bronsted. They're already, the city.
Remember already the city on the property on the other side of those?
And you get it.
Does the city on the property on the other side of those location?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's the walking trail.
And they were promised that when Gary Campbell went in and got the.
And one of those, and I, Doc and I talked several times, we've all looked at it, if you drive between the courthouse and, um.
New Silverstone.
Well, actually, down by the silver, by the pump station, there is a drive, there is a gravel or dirt or whatever you wanna call it, access to that gate. You have to drive over the, over the trail into that gate. So, some of that's county, and then, and it meets Doc's property, under the family trust.
Is that not where the railroad went through?
Uh, probably close, yeah. So, he agreed with me at one point, whether, but I, but I, but certainly it'll be a written easement. But that, that's good. He had, he was hesitant for a few years to drive over the truck. To the truck to go check on the cattle. And I said, you absolutely have our permission to drive over your own.
There's actually this little sliver land out there that's kind of swampy, and it's not, so I got film actually.
Yeah.
There's, what's that road that, uh, passing out of passion?
Yes.
Behind, you know, what, they're gone in front of New Silverstone.
Right, right, right.
It goes down there, there are lift stations.
Right, that's why I called you.
So, it goes over there to the lift station, and it's just kind of looks, shape, but it's parallel to the current trail that's.
He started, he finally started using that.
Yeah. But there's a gate right here off the Burges' park.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's another gate over there, kind of behind the gate.
So, these three circles really are really accessible off the trail?
Yeah, they are.
They are, well, you can.
Okay.
And, and we, as in, uh, um, Chad or, or, wasn't Jeff, so Chad, one of, or many, street directors, went back there and took that, that, the one I was describing to get to the creek to remove tree last year, I guess it was.
So, you located that access point off of that little Main Street connector?
Yeah.
Between there and where you were talking about, where it says northeast, southwest, there's actually, that Chester Creek.
Right, right.
Now, what are you looking at, looking at there now?
That, that little gate off of that Main Street.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So, that, that was my kind of concern, but I, I don't, I didn't wanna.
Can we reflect that on the board?
Any amendment or what?
And it's, it is, yeah, we did it. A big amendment?
Oh, I didn't know, excuse me.
So, this is a permanent exception to the flood, flood plain zoning laws. In my mind, I just picture flooding half of the town. That's the only problem I have with this. This is a great, a great deal. It's just that item four, they fathered it. I think it's beyond me.
When was that flood, that flood plain ordinance in this deal where Hunter, the flood plain manager and all that, that's all like within the last year.
That was very recent.
I mean, all of that hap, none of it, none of that was part of this until in the last.
Right, and that, that's why they say.
Which is why they're saying, this is, this is kind of popped up.
But I'm thinking the flood plain, though, is, is all as a part of the federal regulations, right? I mean, it's not us the same, we've created a flood plain.
So, can we give them, I mean, this seems like another level other than us. It seems like.
Well, wait, they may, even at the city, what the city did with their flood plain, what they're saying is, the city agrees, this was all done after the fact, let us go pursue it. State and federal, somebody might show up and go, you can't do that.
Well, they, they say it in their own paragraph, or you did.
Yeah.
The seller understands there will be other required approvals from the state, and if the city agrees, there's no control over those approvals. We, we can give them our approval, but.
We can agree to this and nothing more.
But somebody else can come in and go, no.
I'd rather, I'd of course say we waive all permits, that we, uh, we, we allow water taps, sewer taps, but requesting an exception, a permanent exception to the flood plain, and having it in writing.
That's why I brought it up.
Cause we know what happened just a couple of years ago. It was just a lake that went all the way back and flooded Indian Hills, Agreenwood West, and all those houses flooded, and that happened again. They're all gonna be pointing right here, item four, this is where you did. And these guys went out there and filled that whole thing and created a dam and dammed all that water up. That's what I, that's what I worry about.
You're a hundred percent correct.
Hundred two. I said.
I mean, I think you got a dam now.
You do?
You're just backing the dam up.
There'd be two dams then.
You have some.
You're adding a dam, you're not pulling it, you're adding.
But again, just for the sake of considering it, you got two bridges gonna be replaced that allows more water, and you got three other ones that aren't even there now. What, what is that? And, and nobody knows, you, nobody has crystal ball, is that the old?
There's a hydrologist with the, with the state highway department that could probably tell us.
I would assume they can.
And, and it would look ridiculous if it had, if the highway ended up with raised pileups, and then all of a sudden, there's this earthen dam in between them, and there's commercial buildings, and they go back to item four and go ahead, and we allow it.
So, well, what, and I agree, I, I, that's the reason I brought it up. That's the reason I brought it, and Hunter brought it to my attention.
I'd rather waive all fees.
The, uh, yes, sir.
I asked.
Stick your name and address.
I asked them at the, uh, when we went over to.
Public hearing.
Public hearings. I got a couple of them together that said, what's happened to our dam break exercise because of the flooding and all that? And apparently, the highway's gonna be taller, first gonna be higher than what we have here, and as you said, the bridges are gonna be, not quite twice as big or long. They said there's gonna be twice as much, uh, open area for all that water to go through on both those bridges. So, because that was my, that was my concern, when they, it looks like they're building another, another set of dams, hey? And they said, oh, no, these will be knocked out, and then those are gonna be taller and wider and longer. And so, uh, they said, there's plenty. They said, it wouldn't be here, our hydrologist would have done it if it didn't work out. I said, well, you just.
That's already digging now.
As far as I know, they haven't come back to us and said, can we see your maps? But I'm sure they had everything that Hunter could have.
And, and that goes along too, chief, with what AC and I have heard, and probably other people have heard all along, when, as far as access underneath these things, underneath the new road, not, and I'm sure they're not gonna do that. If they do for, for cattle, they're gonna do it for, if they do it, which remains to be seen, to allow that water to go underneath that highway.
I did talk to a couple of engineers, I think that's three, full three of them, talking about it, and they're like, no, there shouldn't be any issues. But then again.
Of course, they don't know.
Yeah, the, after the dam break, if I have an issue, I'll have lots of.
I, I don't think at all, so Dane texted me this afternoon to let me know he had sent this, and, and he said, if there's been issues, let him know. Mr. Pump Plumber pinned this for them, correct? Or? Oh, okay. So, obviously, we can go back to them and say, we're a little nervous about giving free, perhaps, if you will, about saying, from now on, you can build it up if you want to. I don't, I don't, again, I'll, certainly don't slow it down, but.
Well, I have no problem with that.
Well, what you might do is, I mean, one of your options, I suppose, think I, uh, is just buy that seven acre.
I'd rather buy the seven acre than, than possibly flood half.
I would, I would, and I agree, uh, I would suspect.
It says four thousand an acre.
Up to five acres.
Up to five acres? So, that's, that cost us two hundred thousand.
I'd say, I mean, I.
There, there is one person that's.
Two things, one, the, the, that other thing, the up to five acres is only there because.
These little pieces.
If, if you look behind the, the, the walking trail.
Right.
And I think our doc has taken all of it into account. We take all of it, taken it into account. But as construction goes and things wiggle and move and so forth, if you end up with a spot the size of this room, that's just stuck, stuck over there between the highway and the.
If, if item four just said that the, the sellers reserve the right to develop that acreage, understanding that there are required approvals from city, state, federal, then I'm okay with that. Because, I mean, we're not saying that the, that we're accepting our thing, we're saying that, you know, if you do do that, then, you know, you have to, just meet cities, federal, state, uh.
Well, you didn't have to, you didn't have to, what it says, and I still have to meet the state.
And I think it's exactly what it says with your last paragraph, your last sentence.
It, it does, but, but it still says that we're kind of late, we're ranking ours, you know, and, and I think.
So.
Yet that part, the thing is.
So, just re, re, so remove the exception to the flood plain, which is scary language.
Right, and say that they, they reserve the right to develop that part.
Yeah, and then, and use that to fill that in before you said, and then leave all the rest of it. Or palpable, palpable. Right.
Well, it probably is for us.
That's what's, yeah.
Part you said, only said, might.
Because that, I mean, that, that still gives them the ability to do that. I mean, later on, if it's, if it does meet, uh, all the plane requirements.
It will take, it gets us off the hook a little bit by saying, do what you wanna do.
Right, right.
Although it says, I mean, they backed it up with, well, if there's other people that say no, but if you just remove it, then we're all, we're all pretty better, better shaped, I think. So, is that what you want me to respond? Yeah.
It's a sticking point, I think.
I know, and I know remove.
Well, here's the deal. Also, going back to the five acres, the item six is what we're talking about. If there's parts of the property that's deemed unusable by the living trust, not by the city or by the highway department, or by Bob Peterson down at your Walthouse, if they, whoever deemed a part unusable, then were able to purchase it at the same price up to five acres. It actually says will purchase. I don't like the word, that goes back to our shall, maybe, or whatever we did at the time.
That's really though, for those little unforeseen slivers.
I agree with that. So, they're saying, we will have to buy them up to five acres if they're.
I will tell you why that's in there, because I told them we would.
And we should. I agree, that price, the wills.
Well, I told them.
If our doc really did their.
Four thousand dollars.
If our doc really did it right, which I think they probably did, and nothing moves.
They're not there.
Then I don't think you gotta do that.
They surveyed it twenty times.
It could happen, kind of deal, you know?
Well, we literally went in and looked at a couple of these slivers that I can, and, and I can promise you, if it is what I saw, it is. It's, part of it's over there behind, there's about two foot of water from a, from a, from a distance, it looks like you're fixing to get into some cropping.
Right.
And there may be, but it is, it's a swamp back there, literally behind, uh, the bank.
Maybe, yeah.
Cross the creek.
I mean, and I'll just say, not only in particular.
Yes.
When this all started with.
Oh, yeah.
This is ridiculous. He just gave away farm, and on top of that, we got this piece over there behind the drugstore. We got this piece over here between the bridges, we got all these little pieces that are now useless. And so, not only did we sell all this for this price, then all the sand's now useless. We can't do anything with it.
But I think it's like what Stuart said, they're, they're not going to be earthen levees and then just a bridge just to get over the creek. They're gonna expand that, and the bridge is gonna be really further, and like I said, these two bridges that we have here, they're gonna be, they're gonna be increased, they're spans, so that there is, I able to, more water to pass under, and there's not gonna be a, a dam, like you said, you know, just to, it's come, come down to the narrow funnel. It's gotta get through that part. It's gonna be, the spans are gonna be increased, so it's gonna allow more water to go through there, and also allow cows to get through there, because it's gonna be, you know.
Yeah, the optimism, optimist in me wants to believe that once this is done, we don't ever see that even flood like that anymore. Now, that's, Mr. Terry doesn't believe that, and I understand.
Well, and again, on, on item four, I was wanting to say, the, eliminate that first two sentences, and just start where it says, you know, the James A Burgess Junior and Myra Tavers Living Trust reserve the right to, to develop that land upon completion of this biopress project, and the sellers understand that, uh, there will be approvals from city, state, you know, uh, you know, uh, to, to do that development, but, you know, they can certainly go, if they wanna try to fill all that in, and they get approvals to do so. But we're not having to say that, you know, we're, we're making exceptions to ours, because we're really trying to comply with the state and federal rules.
If we hit hindsight's point, you know, doesn't matter, if we, this is all based on that recent ordinance that we disallowed barrels to be put in, which is a good ordinance. I mean, we, we got other areas across town that Hunter is holding people to speak to the fire due to that, the ordinance.
Right.
And I think we're open up indoor boxes at least, making an exception.
I, I, it's, the price is good, and you know, it's, it's exceptional. I think in item four, we ought to just waive all commercial development fees in that.
Yeah.
Place that you're talking about right there. We're not, we're not waiving flood plains, and I think it may be a sticking point. I think from now on, we just waive the commercial development fees, so when they develop that little spallac.
There won't be any if it's, the city cars in the water. There won't be any development fee.
But there's.
Which, which they, and I know, we all know who it is, who wants it. But, but he said even, reluctantly, that it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out.
Here's the deal. We need to wait for, the main reason is, once the thoroughfare gets built, and then these two bridges are redone, this area between, you know, ninety-six and the battle. And then, once we'll get the big rain that we, we'll get at some point or other, and then we can see how bad it actually does affect the city. However, cause they're not gonna start developing as soon as the cars are passing. I mean, this is gonna be under construction, the two bridges, right? I mean, so there's, I mean, we'll probably be dead and gone before a lot of this stuff, before they even thinks about getting developed. However, it'd be nice to be able to see once all the road destruction, all the cars are moving on Center Street, Highway ten, we get the big rain, wow, that didn't hurt at all. Matter of fact, didn't flood as bad. Then we can come back in here if they want to develop and say, we can waive that flood plain area, because it turns out, it wasn't that bad of a problem after we got all these roads put in. And, but I agree a hundred percent. We're not just gonna say, ah, do it everyone, we're good with that place, say, are you over here? No, cause that's what gets in trouble a whole lot, when we have, you tell one construction guy, you can do it this way, other guy, you have to do it this way, you can't do it that way. I mean.
I agree.
And, and it pisses me off.
But you make it about.
Well, it pisses me off, and we're getting held hostage because of the good grace of Dr. James A Burgess.
No.
And we're getting held hostage by the trust fund.
Why don't we say?
Which is a good friend of mine.
And, and they're not trying to hold you hostage. I'll take exception to that, but the, I think in item four, you say that when the city agrees to negotiate in their faith to develop the property, once it is determined, like Ken just said. What we're talking about.
Then it's not a detriment to the rest of the city.
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna let four lots of strip malls for whomever flood out half of the town, well, that's not very good business.
I agree.
Mark, so I'm good for everybody to sign all these documents. I'm calling, I'm very well enough to write that, really. But I refuse for this to build that way, you know?
Well, they're not doing it. I hope they're hostage. They're doing it to have an option to do something with it.
So, it.
But I think for us to say.
Okay, that's on the record.
We'll, we'll negotiate.
But if this bill falls through, because we're not gonna allow those nine acres to be developed, then you can change your tone, I guess, maybe.
I will, but.
All right.
I mean, if, 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 if all this is said and done, and the, uh, or engineers or whoever comes back and say, well, this is no longer a problem.
I mean, if, 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 if all this is said and done, and the, uh, or engineers, whoever comes back and say, well, this is no longer a floodplain.
Right.
You know, then we're saying, this is no longer a floodplain, and so, and I think we're all about commercial development.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, let's, let's do that, let's get back, and I say let's, Travis. Or Daniel.
You want to take like?
Daniel, I don't, I don't, well, I, 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 I think we just, whatever you want to do, but I, I totally agree what you said, strike, strike that. Don't do it in part one, go do what you want to do when you want to do it, after, after things are built. Do know, and I think you know already, do know that our dot has to have this easement before they're going to do anything at all. So, we don't want to, we don't want to, you don't want to mess that timeframe up, because start messing the timeframe up with something this big, you could be messing it up for a long time.
And, and you don't think that's a care for them to, to say that, yeah, uh, we'll, like Ron Ross said, how he stated that, you know, uh, all the commercial tax and.
No, others is great.
That's a hundred percent great. So, if you can develop, I think.
Yeah, if you can develop.
I mean, the other side of being pissed off is, in, in their view, we're holding them hostage by saying, you're going to go do this and render this seven or nine acres, whatever, unusable.
Well, right now, isn't it, isn't it unusable? Right now, it is, isn't it unusable?
What about this?
Because it's their floodplain.
Well, that could be a farm.
What about this also?
I think if you say.
You gotta agree right now, it's not even right now.
We'll negotiate in good faith, once we know how the thing has been built, so that it can be developed for commercial use, or whatever you want to say. Because, we don't know what the bridge looks like, we don't know what the dam looks like, we don't know any of it. So, until we know that, if we're all just arguing about something, we don't know anything about it.
Right, that's right, I agree with that.
So, who wrote that down?
Hell, I'm right.
Are you? Yeah.
I'll say, I'll say send it to Travis, and let him incorporate it.
We'll see, I can say it, and go ahead. We will negotiate in the future, in good faith, the future development of nine acres.
Not that. Sorry, Rod, go ahead.
Uh, Daniel's amending it.
Okay.
Does this say specifically?
It doesn't say specifically.
The land between the new bypasses.
Yeah, and just have to clarify it any further, we're to clarify anyway. You don't, no, I don't, I don't think they put this in there necessarily, but for consideration, and somebody mentioned it earlier, if it's deemed that it's not usable at all, that we buy it. And then we negotiate that price, I doubt that they're going to want just four thousand an acre because of stuff. But if it's deemed, it's, it's the same floodplain we're buying elsewhere.
So, so should we increase that then to nine acres then, that, that last item?
What if we, what if we say this, on item four, the city will negotiate in good faith to, uh.
Consider.
Assist development, but on this land between the bridges, either the purchase of, or the development of the land between the bridges, this, that we're talking about. Which says, we'll come back to you at some later date, and if it's declared.
You're, you're.
An island, we'll buy it for whatever you think working, to me, makes sense.
You're the one that knows how to do it.
Would they put a brochure in right now?
So, so if I were them, to, because I'm thinking that too, if I were one of them, and I didn't know if it was available or not, I would want available, developed, full price for it. And that would be incumbent upon us to, just to figure out if it is, you know what I mean? That's, whether they would do that or not, I was tickled to death, plain old genuine terms, that this came back with even the six acres that he mentions for the same price, because they, they didn't have to do that, to be honest with you. That, that six acres could have been ten thousand acres, right? So, I was like, really, this is cool, plus another five, up two five. So, they, they did us a, uh.
And as, as a councilman, I mean, I'm super appreciative of that, and I appreciate all, I mean, that's all in good faith with Dr. Burgess himself. But we can't.
Just look at it.
Right, on the flooding aspect, we have to know what's going to go on beforehand.
I, I brought Hunter in, had he read it, he's like, you really want my?
And I'm like anybody else, I have to assume that someone from our dot has already flashed water on a computer, and made it look all pretty, and it flooded, and well, you know, but.
Right.
You know.
I think we've got something here, a plan.
This is a better plan, because we'd say to anyone, but.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with what I'm writing.
Well, one of them.
No, two. I can't.
We're getting lost, we're being videoed.
Absolutely.
Hi, everybody.
I think they.
This is not going to get mad about anybody, everybody's got a different opinion.
I think some of them at least feel that Dr. Burgess gave away the store, and they really thought they could have made more money.
Sure.
I would be very happy if they would just put a price on it, and then we could talk about just purchasing.
Yeah, but, but maybe.
Which part is just right here, the nine acres?
Yeah, between the bridges.
Right.
Okay, tell me what, see how you, what you think about this.
Dear.
Dear John, uh, the city will negotiate in good faith to either purchase the property, or assist as possible to enable the development of the land between the new bypass and existing ten. I mean, I, I guess, for the use of time. Upon the completion of the bypass project.
I would, I would specify, to me, if I were them reading that, I would want a little specifics like, such as, as Rod mentioned, waiving permit fees, whatever.
Well, I think we've, we've seen it all, we, and we could, but, I mean, I think.
Well, we've never done.
We will assist as possible, which gives the city, really, right?
I just.
I don't know what's possible. Can you waive fees, can you do that, whatever, I mean, we could determine all that.
Well, you could put such as, such as, for example, I don't know.
I would be, that'd be interesting as, as option B.
Just see what they want for it.
What they want for it.
But we can ask that.
I'd refer the other way, if you don't want to go with it. I know what I put in.
I think the amount is enough, a hundred thousand dollars, I think. The possibility would be, of course.
We know some, you know.
And there may be the, well, and they would not be in this.
And then, the city could only buy that land at fair market value, which is.
True. Which is very, yeah, true, by law.
Is it a floodplain?
It's a.
I mean, we will purchase at fair market value, or assist you in the development of the property.
You're going to be the one to read it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, upon completion.
We didn't, we didn't have to read it with the family.
And it says upon, you know, upon completion of the bypass project.
Yeah.
So, at that time, we know, I beg the dead, I'll buy the bridge and all that jazz, if we don't.
Do what?
Oh, no, I'm just, my mind, my mind, here.
Meeting needs to be added.
But you're still leaving the ordinance back?
Yes.
You're still leaving the ordinance back?
Yes.
Blood's a.
I mean, I would suggest we agree to this with those changes. We're not, it's got to be signed by two parties to be an agreement, so if they want to blow up, they don't have to sign it. If they don't like it, they don't have to sign it.
Are we talking about the agreement or the resolution?
The agreement.
So, it's the purchase agreement?
I might suggest, uh, give the mayor authorization to enter into the contract, uh, whilst the meeting's going to have with the Burgess's, taking the council's concerns to them, and whilst an agreement reached that is amenable to both sides, and maybe a council member or two can be present at the meeting, make sure that concerns are, are heard.
So, again, we don't, so we don't want to pull this up any more than.
That way, whenever the parties come together, then he can go in and.
Resolution you're referring to, I mean, us to make the property.
The, the money for, yeah, the, yeah, the, the resolution that this all.
Yeah, I think the name should be that.
Make a motion, we allow the mayor to enter into the Burgess State Purchase Agreement with the Burgess family, with our concerns.
With one council member present?
One, sure.
That's what I'm talking about.
You can't have two, because then it becomes a bloodthirster.
That's what I do say.
And so, this is on just the agreement, yeah. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Graywater?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
As the founder of the.
That was simple.
Is that?
That, that wasn't the resolution, we were just there for you.
So, that wasn't only on our agenda, was this what we're on?
No, it was attached with number six, it was attached to number six.
Yeah.
So, it's the agreement that goes with it.
Yeah, so go back to five. I mean, I thought we were.
Oh, it's the sixth.
I'm six, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. We did.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we need to talk about the money for it, though. Um, I have.
I gotta get off of that.
Have issues to say on that?
Are you still here?
No. So. There's a, uh, I agree, I'm not even sure you know the dollar.
With the twenty seven acres, that's four thousand?
Well, this, this is based on four thousand times twenty two point seven eight, is what this resolution is based on.
Right.
So, I don't know what you're buying, and how much you did, because if we adjust the budget and do a resolution for it, and you're contemplating it, making consummated now, in twenty twenty three, we could adjust the budget in twenty twenty three. But if you're looking at this not being an actual expense until twenty twenty four, we can budget that into the street department's budget in twenty twenty four. But right now, the street department's city sales and use tax, is the, is where that's being planned to come from, is woefully underfunded based on the budget needs, and we've all already revisited it twice. Right now, they're going to spend, or they're budgeting to spend, we haven't seen this yet, so there's still discussion that's going to be. They're looking to end of the year with thirty one thousand dollars in our city sales and use tax. Now, that's after twenty twenty four's projects, twenty twenty five's projects are, one project alone would wipe out their entire revenue stream of city sales and use tax for twenty twenty five. And you know that comes in much, you wouldn't be able to do anything until the end of the year, just to be able to pay for it. So, if you, that's before, well, no, I've actually budgeted it in ninety one thousand, one twenty in that number. So, we talk about reserves, and people always question, where does my reserve never come from? What I'm comfortable with is that we don't go for a little one year's worth of revenue stream, because that gives you the ability to fund an additional project in that year, without waiting for the buildup of the revenue stream to come, to follow my life. So, your, your reserve in your fund should be one year's worth of revenue stream from your tax base, in, in the city sales and use taxes. I'm not comfortable with that. But regardless, there, that's got to be revisited, because regardless of whether you do this, they're still in a, they're still in a better situation, they're looking at, they're looking at financing a lot, just from this, on projects that are needed. And I've been telling you for the last two years that this is the department that's woefully underfunded, for what they're saying they're needing to street, they're saying they need the project saved. We haven't had a budget study session on this, and they're not talking about it, we are going to meet back with them and revisit this before your study session comes up, to come up with a beam plan on how all of this is going to be calculated. They're, they're already leaving their street fund down to where, if you look at street and all their funds combined, you could guard, just don't even take into consideration sideways. They're looking at, right now, they have almost four million dollars to buy in, and next year, they'll have one or two, and those are going to be sitting in.
Well, I think this purchase supersedes whatever could possibly be going on in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five in the street department.
Totally.
So.
This is a necessity.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent. But does that, you might say, the sales and use tax street?
That's exactly what the tax is passing.
That, I totally agree with that, but all of those.
Unfortunately, just like the one point four million dollar splash pad, that we're probably not have, that much an expensive one, uh, that is what the tax is passing.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted you to know where that, where the situation is with street right now, so, they're going to have to go back to the drawing board, for sure.
Absolutely, I mean, that, that's not a big problem, that's what we do the budget study sessions for, is what they, they present their budget for, and we say, well, we don't have money for that, so we're not doing that, we got to pay, I mean, that's, that's how it works, we've been, we obviously, we've been doing it for a long time. I have no problem telling.
This is called the disclosure.
Right, absolutely, right.
You guys make the decision, I don't want you to make the decision.
Whatever it takes to make this project happen, if we got a ton of loins, who cares? This is the bill, this has got to be done.
Well, well, what you're doing is postponing down the road, projects that need to be done, I just wanted you to know that.
You just said, we've just set a world record for actually spending thirty seven percent of our capital fund budget. I mean, so.
As overall of the city.
Right, I, I get that, but that's still, they're included in that world record. I mean, whatever they've done is part of that thirty seven percent.
Minimal.
If there's an issue at all with all this, I've been sitting up here for fifteen or twenty years, and the amount of stuff that gets capital funded, that's.
I'm not trying to argue with you, what I'm trying to tell you is what the situation is, so if you can make an informed decision about what you want to do going forward.
Yeah.
So, that's all I'm trying to do.
No problem.
That's, I, I just wanted you to understand where we're at.
So, are we, again, so, are we talking about just the ninety one thousand, or are we talking about the overall project?
The ninety one thousand, I'm saying, if, if you want to adjust this year's budget for it, then you're assuming it's going to be paid out this year. If not, it's in next year's budget, I, I don't know what, how, when do you think this would be paid out?
You talking about, I'm, I'm sorry, are we talking about the money to the Burgess family?
Yes.
The twenty two point. The next year.
You're going to pay it out next year?
Yeah.
But it's going to be in next year's budget, so we don't need a resolution, is what I'm saying.
Well, this is making this year's.
I mean, if, if it's done, I, this year's great, if, if that's doable, without messing things up.
This, this resolution is amending this year's budget.
I understand, but when is it going to be paid out? Is it going to be paid out next year, then it's, what I'm saying is you don't need a resolution for this year. If you know it's going to be paid out next year, it's in the budget, you'll approve it in the budget.
What's today?
But it's.
Well, we still do need the resolutions, we just construct this thing.
I would, I would.
Because it's authorizing the city to don't make the land.
Totally fine, I don't care, put it in now, and you're maybe under, your estimate for budgets may be under what your actual dollar amount is. I don't know if you leave that playing, or.
Well, the thing, so, and you know this too, Tom, no, but, but this family has not, has never been holding their hand out, in fact, I begged you almost, please, let's, let's get you paid, and I wouldn't take it, because he want to make sure it's going to happen before you say, receive payment, that's just who actually being he was.
That's fine.
And so, technically speaking, if, if we worked out the details of this agreement next week.
You know, cash and pay.
I think we could appropriate, appropriately pay them before the end of the year. If not, they're probably fine, really, the only difference is a resolution or not, is that what you're saying?
I.
Required.
Now, it's always resolutions.
You just tell me the dollar amount that you want that time, is that the. You just tell me the dollar amount that you want that time, is it ninety one, one twenty at the twenty two point seven eight, or you're gonna do twenty seven and say that's a C? And we put, I put twenty seven acres in there at four thousand.
I, I'd say you do the twenty seven for.
We'll change that to twenty seven.
And, and I'll pass on that, I would ask if, yeah, certainly, that's twenty two.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I say certainly, go ahead.
Twenty seven's in the agreement.
Twenty seven's in the agreement.
I thought twenty two's in the agreement.
Is the twenty seven because of the additional five acre?
No, it's saying twenty seven, they will sell up to twenty seven at five, or four thousand per acre, if it's needed. And then, if we need more, if I'm interpreting correctly, if we need more than that, they will sell still at four thousand, up to five acres. In other words, if we needed thirty two, we get off at four thousand acre. If we need thirty three, they come back and give us another price.
So where does it say twenty seven?
Right.
I would be safe putting in a hundred.
Yeah. So you're referring to twenty seven is in the purchase agreement.
Right.
But over, in the resolution, it just says twenty two, correct?
It was twenty two.
We didn't have order.
Well, because the twenty two point seven eight is the, is everything that we.
The twenty, our doc.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I'm asking that, our doc's number was the twenty two.
But not, but not the slivers.
I thought that had the sliver.
No, that's the, no.
Now, this is just area of.
And I would almost be, I could almost be positive to that, because not until the Burgess family met with Mr. Ward to, for him to explain what these slivers are, did that come back at twenty seven acre.
You're now, you're at twenty seven.
They came up with a twenty seven number due to a conversation with our doc, saying.
Where, where is the note, so is this exhibit A?
The twenty?
That is the appraisal from our doc.
Yeah.
That says if we were buying this, if the city agreement didn't have anything to do with any of this, our doc would pay.
Our doc would deny that.
A hundred and forty seven thousand seven eight.
What was the twenty seven acre?
Was a twenty two.
Twenty two point seven. I just think it's either, Tom, is this right or not, if you did it for twenty seven, can you, is that, I know it's set in stone, because it's a resol, was a resolution, but you don't have to.
No.
There's nothing to say you don't.
It just, it just ups.
Up to, I, I, but.
I'd rather make the budget or space scenario.
Yeah, but I think that's what you do. And, and at the end of it, it's twenty two point. Charlie, that's awesome. We saved, we saved twenty thousand dollars.
So you wanna keep this the way it is, and just add a section that says, you'll improve up to twenty seven acres?
We're gonna change ninety one, one twenty to one oh eight, save not to see twenty seven acres. Or something to purchase up, up to twenty seven.
All right, so, so I'm confused then, from the area from ninety six to the.
Big Bo.
The, now, not to, uh, to the miners from moral here. I mean, that's the, they're talking about that part of commercial land that they would like to develop.
Yeah, that's, that's the nine, seven or nine acres that's not part of it.
Doesn't do to our purchase.
There's nothing to do with this.
Because to me, it seems like, when you look at this diagram, it looks like it's, it goes right up there to the.
We're not buying all of it.
We're not buying all of it.
We don't. Paying for this right here.
We're, yeah, we're buying where the highway is and where.
A hundred and sixty eight acres.
Yeah, you know, we're buying a whole farm, that is. Right, I'm saying something to you.
Yeah, well, that picture, I'm not sure.
Hey, we can buy the whole farm for ninety one thousand, I said we get it. That was a joke, anyway.
Yeah, the twenty seven, twenty two point whatever is just the roadway, basically.
It's just the roadway, yes.
The right of way and third foot lot, our markets. There's some slivers here and there that they're talking about, that's why we're putting the twenty seven, hundred and eight thousand, hundred and eighteen, that's a new change. I saw that picture too, I think that's just a picture.
Just a first picture.
So. On the very first whereas. Does that need to change?
That's what I was saying.
Need to acquire up to twenty seven acres, it's a real problem.
Right.
I think that's what Tom was saying.
I was, I was saying that.
Is that what you want, say on that?
Twenty seven acres.
Up to.
Up to, yes, up to.
All right.
It may not be that much.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What's this picture?
That's City Hall. If you'd like for me to tell you what I thought it was.
What are those lines?
That's supposed to be our property. We do go across the creek, you do know that.
That property that's not on the city limits. Everybody says it's in the city.
We own, the Farmers Bank is signed, I don't know that that's on our property, but we own what's not filled in by Joe Kellner.
That's what I always thought, this just looks like it goes on.
I know, it looks hard, doesn't it?
Right.
So.
So this is misrepresented?
I don't know.
I doubt it, I doubt there's.
That line?
You, you would think not.
I definitely look at the panels.
Well, that's, that's not official.
Not official.
Um, Google Earth imagery.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I, I'm always. Well, if you look, actually, is that not the sign?
That's what it looks like, the sign.
So the sign right there is the other edge of our property, it's not, it's not a hidden game. I agree with you. All righty.
So in section two, though, we just say this way, right, or?
What?
Just detailing what the N A is. With the areas of acquisition.
Yeah, no, I'm, if we keep section two in there, we're gonna say up to.
Yes, the, the.
It breaks down to two, seven acres.
Yeah, all that is the areas we're acquiring.
On the resolution section.
See, leave them here up.
I think so, too.
Yeah, I think it's legal there.
Well, I think section two doesn't need to say up to seven, uh, because it's, that doesn't have father.
We've, we've said it at the top, it means.
Yeah, but this is the.
Now, if you got a legal description that makes up that twenty two point seven eight, so if you throw another five acres at it, you don't have a legal description of what that is.
Section one.
That's why it needs to be worded up to twenty seven acres.
Section one can say that?
Yes, right.
Up to, and then leave section what it is.
Yes.
And then up the money in section.
And section three can say an up to.
Okay.
This is a resolution, we can.
Right, change it.
Well, we want it to make sense.
Yes.
So, section two, we're saying that's a clarification, but then I think somewhere in section two, we said, and including an additional five acres.
Well, we're not, that's just why we put up to in the very first whereas, so.
Right, but then we're saying, we're clarifying, and we're saying we're clarifying, oh, it's just gonna be this many acquisitions. So how, how can you say when it's up to, then we're saying, well, we're gonna acquire.
There may be a need.
Twenty two point seven eight. Yeah, I think somewhere in section two, we say, we need a, an additional five acres.
Yeah, because if you left it. Up to a hundred and eight thousands, all I need is a dollar in that, you want me to put it in there? Just don't, you were fixed on wording anywhere else, but if you want ninety one, one twenty, I'll put it in there, if you want a hundred and eight, I'll put it in there.
We for sure want twenty seven times four thousand.
Yeah.
I'll put a hundred and eight.
And we'll worry about, we'll, we'll put, we'll.
How do we get to twenty seven?
That's what the, they, we're just.
Purchase agreement.
Telling us we can have for four thousand dollars.
So to say.
Later, exactly, seven point seven eight then.
Can I, can I say that, that other agreement is on exhibit B, so it makes sense? Or would it, because then that explains the twenty seven.
Needs to say up to forty eight. Take twenty two point seven eight plus five, the twenty.
There's a limit.
Seven point seven eight.
That five is in back here in, in item six, it's a whole different ballgame, right here on B, on the Roman numeral five.
It's another.
It talks about twenty seven.
It says, if there's other five acres, if there's another acres that you want, up to five acres itself.
That's different than this five.
Two different five.
It's.
Yes.
Well, this one's actually a four point two two.
It's not twenty seven. The, the, the purchase agreement just rounds it up to, hey, if you want another, up to five, we'll take four thousand acres.
Right.
Now, well, up to.
The item six is only intended to be if there's some unforeseen sliver somewhere.
For Roman numeral five, which was the twenty seven.
I can't even.
Yeah.
It's all corrupt, the backside, very first.
Is it okay if we attach this exhibit in with the resolution? Clearly. I will put no section to it.
That's all.
After it's figured out.
I was just including the up to twenty seven in the resolution, that's what it says.
That's right, everywhere it says the twenty two point seven eight, it should say to me, up to twenty seven eight.
Except section two.
Right.
Except section two.
We will add it, it'll be in the other.
Additional five acres.
Section two is just pertaining to the areas of acquisition that we know.
At a hundred and eight. Yeah, so, so I'm making a motion, we pass this resolution with the.
New number?
New changes in acreage and dollar value. Same.
So that way, if it happens this year, we're good to go.
Yeah.
If it happens next year, you'll talk about it at budget time.
I get it, yeah.
Mr. Brown?
But it'll come out this year, just to, or if this goes through.
Yeah.
We already committed, so.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ray Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Do you notice?
Did you say, yeah, all right?
I said yes.
Well, that was easy.
Okay.
Okay, where are we?
On five.
Five. Resolution authorized donation of city property to our doc for agreement by best project.
So what does it do to our building? If we donate all this to the, you know, what does it do to the sewer building there, I mean, is it theirs, or is it?
No, uh, where are you looking at?
Page. I can't hear her.
Greg's building.
Yeah.
It's all moving.
So, so you'd have to been out there when they surveyed, it does not encumber the building at all.
It just.
It goes in front of it.
Goes in front of it.
Greg called, I'm gonna give you a little picture, just real quick for fun, Greg calls me, I've been preaching this by best for a long time, right? I told Greg it's coming, and he goes, nah, we'll see, twenty years turn out. The very next day, the very next day, there's a survey crew in his front yard at the sewer plant, and he goes, are they taking the plant? So it's, it, it does not, it does not take that building. What they do is, you're, the diagram that they're showing, because all of City Hall, the diagram too, right? So they're showing you the whole property.
That's gonna be affected.
That is within that, right?
Affected area, yeah.
Yeah. That makes sense?
I guess we're gonna show all of City Hall.
The one you talked about.
Yeah, but I, I thought it was.
Trail, let him get one, the walking trail.
They will, they will have to remove some of the walking trail, they're gonna take this bridge out. There's a trail going under it, they're gonna replace it, unless they put a new bridge in, so yes.
But, but we're giving them the walking trail.
Giving them an easement to, to that.
Is that what all this is about?
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing, what we're buying from Burgess family, and then, and then giving to our doc, right? Our property that is encumbered by said right of way, we're giving to our doc, the right of way to it. They will put the trail back, you go without, or you go with ours, I don't know, it's, it'll be there.
It's gonna be their property, though, technically.
Technically. Technical.
They have to maintain it.
I don't know about that.
Yes, how that will be.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm, that's what I'm worried about, I mean, what happens in, if the light goes out on the light pole? They're gonna, are they gonna say, ain't our trail, we say, yeah, they don't.
I wouldn't expect them to fix the light pole.
You know.
We get hung up on this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw his bets.
It's like stoplights, we gotta change the bulb.
But to me, we're only donating land or donating easement.
If something happened on that trail.
Since to me, we're donating land.
Well, it's kind of the same thing, to be honest, but you give them an easement, Burgess is giving, that's what we're buying from Burgess is, is an easement, they don't, they don't get to use it anymore. It's, it's our doc. The same thing, they have no intention of doing anything with that trail, except putting it back and letting us, it being a trail. We're not gonna put an item super highway on our.
So it's, you know, interestingly, Doc gave this property.
Right.
Farmers Bank gave an easement to this property.
Right. We're, we're giving up an easement to the, what Doc had already given us for the trail to our doc, if, where they need it. Yeah.
If you're giving them the property. The trail property, if you're giving that to our doc.
Yeah.
You're basically saying, you do whatever you want with that property.
But they're not, what are they gonna do with it?
Well, you never know.
Well, you could say the same thing about the first property that we're buying and donating to them. We're buying that and donating it to our doc.
Both of them, they're a road.
That's the idea.
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to be the bad guy, I'm just saying, you know.
Yes, the answer is yes, they can do anything they want with it.
So we just hope that they don't?
I bet my life that they don't, especially once I retire.
You know.
There's no way around it. Either you give them, either you, if you don't allow an easement or set highway, you don't have a highway.
And we ask the people for them.
And the people, the people voted to get this thing done.
I guess I'm, I, I'm just lost why the, why the walking trail is the easement.
It's, well, I don't know, I'm not so the.
Cause they had to wipe the bridge out.
Yeah, they have to take the bridge out, so they can't, they're not gonna go in there and destroy it without being there even. Literally, this bridge is gone. Underneath that bridge, they cannot take that bridge out of the building without damaging that, that cycle or that trail.
Forget that, I mean, which is kind of a temporary easement.
An easement, an easement is sized and underneath said bridge. They gotta have that even underneath, that, that trail that we put.
Technically, it's forever.
Forever, the trail that we built, when Ken Edwards' office, and I was the first director, that we built under the bridge by the car wash.
Yes.
That belongs to the our doc, it's our trail, that it belongs to our doc.
Would, would it be fair to say they need both ends of it, and it's one parcel?
Sure.
So they're just buying the whole parcel?
Exactly.
They're gonna fix it, and then, I guess, it's just a word.
And by the way, now, I say this. That, these two bridges here, and this highway, are gonna be ours, they're donating that back to us, once all this is done. Because that's part of the deal of getting the highway, we take over section, so to your concern, we get it back.
Unfortunately, yes, we do.
Tim's not been happy about that since day one, and I understand. But that's.
I mean, it won't be, we won't be around.
It will not.
Get accustomed by the people having to repair all that.
I've said all along, some mayor, someday's gonna go, what an idiot.
I guess we have to make it their property so they can do what they.
And then they get it back, that's exactly right.
And then for the legal section.
They gotta have it, so they can do what they need.
But we get back.
Don't you have, with the.
Your soul do it.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever is an easement, we get back.
We should have the dark spot on the trail up here.
So the dark spot, oh, you know why it's dark?
I don't know, I said we should have another one.
Oh, you want it?
It's gonna be wiped out on this bridge. I just, they're gonna be.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's why it is dark.
Well, it's dark down there behind Betty's because, or behind the Sonic Labs because that's where the.
Right, same, that's the same thing going after that, right?
Well, yeah. Yeah, it's weird.
It's alright. Look if we can get them out of the ground and say they'll go back up.
Sure. But, I'm so happy I remember that that's gonna be back, that's gonna be back there.
So what do we need here on this number five? Same thing? This is just donating the land back to R. D.
Sorry.
Number five just donated the land back to R. D.
Correct.
I'll make a motion, we pass this resolution.
Okay.
Now, that is every piece of property you see. I mean, or, or right of way within that property. It's not just one, it's everybody you got in front of.
You're talking about basically this three of them?
Three of them, yeah. You got this built, whatever goes with this parcel, you got whatever goes with, wherever else we got property.
It just looks weird that we're dealing with all the city halls.
Well, no, it's just, it's only showing you where the parcel is. The right of way, the right of way within that parcel is what we're donating to R. D.
Very flattering.
It says area of acquisition on this part, point zero two acres.
There you go.
And that, the remainder is just all around it.
Which one is that?
It's the one with the y'all in it.
So, obviously, this is sitting on more than point two acres.
I make a motion to adopt the resiliency of the power, don't we?
Well, we, we already have a motion in second.
And yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Well, that was easy. That's the quote of the ninth. Easyish. Number seven? City attorney, ordinance approving annexation of a city-owned property for future senior citizens.
I'll make a motion, we pass this ordinance by Tyler Looney for the first reading.
Thank you.
Motion second.
I read it, it's not hidden.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Janice? An ordinance annexing certain real property within the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, signing the same awards declaring emergency in front of the offices.
So we need it, we need it.
We didn't do the whole thing.
Leave it up yet?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to figure out a reading of it, as you call it.
It says it in the, it says it in the.
I know, I didn't, I jumped the middle, I almost, I should have asked before I read the statement now.
I agree with Tim flash tonight.
Wow. Three ten, yes, three ten.
So, this was.
Oh, well, now.
Eyes and percy, I don't need the emergency clause.
Sir, I don't need any emergency clause.
I don't know why they wouldn't wanna go ahead and do this, but I love annexing property.
Yeah, and it's, as far as we waiting on.
I'll admit, someone is accepting the, as you see.
You only know one reading.
Exhibit A is the word that the judge signed.
This is.
Granted, annex, all willing is accepting the annex until this order is passed into the state, so maybe that.
And everything else has been done. We met the judge, he signed, he's good.
But we can't accept this until it's sent to the state, and it's gotta go through three readings the way it is now. Know what I'm saying? We can't accept, I mean, we can't file.
They have to go through three readings if you pass the emergency.
Right, okay. If we don't pass emergency clause, it has to go through three readings before it can be filed and it's ours with the state.
You can suspend the rules, waive the second, third reading now.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Which is not an emergency.
Right. We just don't have, we don't have to put it in emergency.
You don't have to put the emergency clause on, you got thirty day wait.
I'm making that motion.
I make a motion, we waive the second, third.
Hey, you gotta vote on this one.
Would you vote it then?
You did?
It's so tired of getting hilarious.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules, waive the second, third reading, excluding the emergency clause.
Say.
Wait, you have to do them one at a time.
We're just gonna suspend the rules.
Get a waive right now.
Wait, the first.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have to say we are waiving the second, third reading.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Janice?
Okay, so then we make a motion to adopt the ordinance excluding the emergency.
Or just end it.
Or adopt it.
And then you don't do the emergency.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Janice?
Number eight, finance, resolution to adopt temporary operating budget.
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Second.
You got it.
You need to talk about that, that's pretty silly, quite a thing.
It's a housekeeping measure area.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
A little frustrating, I don't think we'll get the budget passed before we.
Right, it's not optimistic, is it?
I don't think I'll ever see it.
Number nine, approval of twenty twenty four Sebastian County library contract. We have no changes to said contract. Correct.
Tom, what do you say?
There was changes.
Library?
A year.
Huh? All the year, sorry.
Do we not do it? Do we do that, our resolution, or we just vote to say we?
The council asked to vote to allow the mayor to enter into contracts.
I'll make a motion that we allow the mayor to enter into the contract of Sebastian County.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sisente. Appreciate you.
Brown?
Yes. Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Number ten is approval of twenty twenty four economic development contract.
Now, this is what we're gonna decide for the year.
Which person is here? It's two. Actually.
No changes besides the.
Are you the chairperson? Where? Who?
I am not.
You are?
I'm here.
Okay.
You're the chair. It's the same amount.
It is the same amount.
Any changes, let's come.
Yes, sir.
On the date.
On the date.
Thanks, Charlie.
Twenty four thousand dollars, same number.
I make, I make a motion, we allow the mayor to enter into contract. We have a motion, second.
Hilarious is what we say.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
This is to, for the mayor to enter into the service agreement with the chamber, former. Yeah, okay, yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Number eleven is approval of twenty twenty four Sebastian County water drill club contract.
We don't have one of those.
Yeah, because we made changes.
Yeah, we gotta tell them that.
Uh, let me just explain what's going on. We had received from, back to then, Boys and Girls Club, a letter asking for fifty one thousand, which we normally give them for their activities, for the children providing sports activities. That is what program we have, and then we decided to, we venture into capital. If you recall, when we did a lighting, we decided that we would remove the automatic stipulation that they get twenty four thousand dollars more. And we said everything that they would want to do as far as capital is concerned, while we tried to recoup some of that expenditures that we put in this year, we would make them come to you guys and ask for the money every time. So the contract that has been rewritten takes the number three consideration by the city of Greenwood. It says, consideration for services provided pursuant to section provision of services. The city will make a contribution of fifty one thousand to be paid out in equal monthly installments. That's for the services that they're requesting. Under capital, it used to say, and further consideration of twenty four thousand dollars for, that's gone. And under four, it says capital expenditures, any capital expenditures or capital improvement necessary to maintain an acceptable level of service of safety and benefit of city's youth recreational activities must be presented to the city council for consideration on an individual case by case basis. Funding for these additional capital related items will be in the solvency expression of city council, city Greenwood, based on fund availability along with the current future financial needs, and obligations of the city. It is well aware of that, because it is not a discussion that we're doing or want to do. So the contract is then formatted in that manner to be presented for signature. Now, like I said, he is, he sent a letter to us for budget consideration for only the fifty one thousand for the program. So he, he's on board with that. So, um, it doesn't take away his ability to come draw, I mean, uh, ask, but it does give him the ability to do that. We just don't prioritize for getting it.
That's, I like that.
So, I don't know if you have to table it.
He did. If it's on the agenda, we want it to go to next town. I have folks table it. They're learning that.
I don't.
It's, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
I know, I said, if we're not doing it, we want to go to the.
I wanna do it.
Are you doing?
I saw, I heard somebody say we have to table it, and I was like, no, I would rather not.
Okay, we don't have the contract in front of us, so that's okay.
Yeah, if we do, you'll just give us a copy of it next month.
Well, our copy machine is broken.
So, I'm fine with what you said, I mean, I'd like to have a copy of it.
We got wild.
We heard it too.
Wild off, it's supposed to be coming, like, we're on their schedule.
They did.
Had a bad day, took a break.
I know.
I make a motion, we approve the contract as explained by Thomas Marsh.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Same, there is.
And then, Mr. White, Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Alright, uh, vote very easily. Raymar?
Sure.
Fine, uh, we'll, sure, order, sir, order your work.
Short and sweet.
Any questions?
Of course, it's a clean opinion, okay.
There you go.
That's a clean, nothing like that, the charm.
This is a formality that is required. Once this, once you have approved the acceptance of this audit report, it will then be distributed to the leg audit, so they can include it with their audit work papers that they have. And then it also can be, it's ready to be sent to the, on companies and the people that would have obligations to send this to, S and P being one of them. The first thing I want to point out is that they talked about the significant audit findings, the difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Again, this year, uh, there's no encounter significant difficulties with us or them, there's no disagreements. Uh, the useful lives of capital assets are considered the most sensitive estimate, and, uh, the largest assets of a fund are written, to be written off. Any significant under or over estimated lives could significantly understate or overstate the financial statements. That's all in advance from other than having your court and.
We got something available today. Can they bring the watch? Anybody bring yours?
Did you, did you distribute that to them?
Oh.
It's on their tablets.
It's on their tablets.
We got something available today, we got a legislature something.
It, it was the yellow, was it yellow?
I didn't open it, I just saw.
Oh.
That's the leg audit.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
This one is on your tablets, and I think I know what's.
There's a thing called uncorrected misstatements, it says you have corrected all such misstatements. Well, what they really mean by that is that throughout the year, our process is that when we identify errors and, and or omissions, we correct them in a normal, first part of the review. So it's not indicating that there was any major ones that they had to catch, they didn't catch any. Separation duties was one of the findings that's always going to be. The two that was always there was accounts receivable and the meter deposits, those are now gone because we took steps to, uh, to rectify that by our general entry that we do to true up the receivable balance to the subsidiary, and then the meter deposits we reconcile on a budget basis. So the one big, big, big item was stipulated in the audit findings was the rate covenant shortage on the two thousand sixteen bond. I don't know if you remember, but the water bond is the bond that has a covenant that says that we will be one hundred and ten percent cover of the debt service in the, in the form of revenue. And, uh, we failed to meet that in twenty twenty two. We are, I'm gonna tell you right now, we're, we're gonna even worse fail in twenty twenty three. Um, I asked him to send me, when he gave me a heads up on it, which I already knew we were gonna be there. It says, look like, looks like the, due to the increased expenses, the fund is gonna be below the one hundred and ten required coverage. Uh, I believe you are already doing the rate study, which is in the bond covenants that requires that. I wrote him back and said, yes, but I asked him to give me how bad, I wanted to know how far is he missing on ten. He said the one time coverage requirements comes up to be around a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. The operating loss adjusted for depreciation and interest is still negative twenty two thousand. Um, I mean, we're supposed to ten percent above zero. Um, if you factor out the flood damage expenses, which is ninety three thousand dollars, it's still nearly sixty one thousand short of the one hundred and fifty four. So, if you consider flood damage expenses an anomaly, then we can argue to the bond holders that that is a one time event and it's, it's an isolated occurrence, but unfortunately, we, we didn't even talk about any kind of a defeasance because the bond doesn't pay off until thirty six. And there's still well over a million dollars in there, and that's just not, not doable. And we're not gonna pull it off our books and, and place it with a bank or any kind of a firm. So, we're, we're good with the fact that we're doing the rate study and that we're taking steps to make that a non-issue in the future. Alright. Now getting to the actual audit report, the audit report is, uh, we were given a brief introduction to by Charlotte. It is an unqualified clean opinion, and that's good. And it says emphasis of matter, the city of Greenwood water sewer departments do not support to and do not present fairly the financial position of the, of the, um, city of Greenwood, and that's because the city of Greenwood's financials includes three departments that are not included in the audit. This is only water city, not the city of Greenwood and Pope Haven. That's why I'm saying that we want to emphasize that. You go into the actual audit itself. Our percent of assets depreciated is thirty six point seven percent, and I always tell you, I told you for every year, that anytime your assets get above a third of the value of your total, and you're looking at aged assets, and you're should be looking at potentially enhancing, replacing, repairing, refurbishing, and that's where we got caught right now in the rate setting structure because that we are seeing that more in the sewer side than we are in the water side. Going to the total net position, our equity position has increased four point six percent, that's good. Anytime you see decreases in your net position, then you're looking at potential liabilities being high, and you're looking at revenue streams being lower, or the revenue being down. So we do want to see a little bit of an increase there. One, one year is not a trend, but if you see one or two or three slipping in that net position dropping, that could be a problem. When you look at the charges for service, our growth from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two in our operating revenues increased five point seven percent. So that's good. There was some growth in the actual customer base as well, uh, for twenty two. Operating expense, the inflationary related is eight percent, but our operating expenses, even though our revenue went up almost six percent, operating expenses went up twelve, twelve percent. Eight percent, we know in twenty twenty two was inflation. We know that by the C O I, C I, yeah. However, that means our operating expenses went up four percent, uh, on its own, so without the inflationary, we would be okay. Inflation killed us and mostly obscured the, uh, items that we portrayed to the citizens regarding the, uh, chemicals and the cost of purchase water. Not operating revenues, if you ever looked at the, uh, the financial statement, it's, uh, revenues that are trans, it's the bond covenant issues, uh, it's the loss. We like to consider it to be interest expense, things that are not part of your normal sellable operations. It's also transfers in that we do from the city sales and use tax to cover certain covered items in the, um, operations. So they, we have a separate category called operating transfers, that's C S U T. We transferred in one point nine million dollars from the city sales and use tax over to operations. Our change in our cash position, we, we increased our cash overall in twenty twenty two by ten thousand dollars. So we basically, everything that came in as far as revenue went out in expenses. But that's about it. We didn't have to dip into anything other than that for the operations side, not for the city sales and use tax side. But, we, uh, increased our net cash position by point one five percent. So, um, yeah, ten, ten thousand dollars, so increasing it on the trail. We do have a change in accounts receivable and a change in inventory. The change in accounts receivable went from seven thirty eight to five thousand two hundred and fifty. I anticipate that with the new rate increases, we'll probably see a pickup in that despite people having trouble paying some of those bills, and I'm surprised that question didn't come out, what are you gonna do for people in limited. limited incomes? That was not one of the questions we had to entertain today. But I, I would think that in 24's audit, that number might get a little higher and we'll have to watch that. Let's go into the notes, depository accounts. They do talk about collateralization of the amounts that we have in the bank for water sewer. And that is a significant amount. We're only at five million in the city sales and use tax part and then about three million in collectively water sewers O and Ms. So that's well above the FDIC's maturability. One of the things that he looks at is whether we're fully collateralized. We are fully collateralized. He does not make any reference to what we call custodial credit risk, which the leg audit does. That means anything that the bank is investing in in order to collateralize, they're collateralizing it in non-secured investments. And that's about 50% of what we're, what they're investing in. Unfortunately though, that is not a finding to us because I, we're collateralized through the bank. It would take a colossal failure on not only the bank, but on the industries that are being invested in in order for us not to be able to improve our funds. So it's a risk, it's a custodial risk in how they're investing, but he makes no mention of it in here. And then we get to compensate. That's, that's a bond maturity, uh, for the water bond is through 2036. One thing I do want to point, if you look at page 11, when you're browsing through this, you'll see the years and what the principal and interest payments are. There is going to be an uptick in our interest payments between 28 and 32. Between 2028 and 2032, we normally are about $48,000 in interest payments. We're going to go to 142 and that's because the series that that bond, those bonds are in for that year, those years are at a higher interest rate. It's probably going from about 1 or 2% to like well over, like 3.5%. So the interest rates kick up in that, um, in the years before the final three years of, of payments and it drops back down to a more reasonable level. Except for the following, uh, no, that's the, I already mentioned about the. You're going to see in the next year's audit, a disclosure regarding the purchase of water rights on 71 and 10th, but that's not in here right now because this is the 22 audit, but in 23, that is an event and it will be noted on the next audit. Other than that, it's a very good audit. Um, they did break it down by entity and all in 2022, uh, water was profitable and you saw, if you were here for the public meeting, you saw that water was $83,000 net adjusted for, um, depreciation and interest. You're looking at adjusted net income of 83,000. Sewer was negative 152, so overall we were negative loss of $74,000, thus precipitating the fact that we must give a rate increase in order to accommodate. I'm just saying with that, that's going to be much higher in 23.
We, uh, the water users on the 71 and 10th camp, we entered into agreement in 22, but we didn't pay for it or whatever, uh, until 23.
Right, okay. The note will be there on that.
All right. I'll need a motion to accept.
Thank you, sir.
And we need a motion to accept that.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Rager.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yeah.
Mr. Daniel.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Finance, federal ARPA funding audit.
This is another audit, and by the way, next month they'll be getting the leg audit. It came in yesterday, so you see they're getting them at home. So I'll be talking about that. That's a little important, uh. City of Greenwood, uh, this was when we expended more than $750,000 of federal funded grant funding. We are required to do an audit, a single purpose audit, uh, have it done. We're, we're going to have the audit this year and we also are going to have to do it next year because we are expending in this year, uh, about a million, one, million two, million 125,000 is what we're doing. Uh, this was the sale or the purchase rather of the senior center. And that was 825,000, 181. That's precipitated the fact that we had to do that for a lot of it. So Schillitz and Associates did the audit for us and they came back with examining, we've examined the city of Greenwood, Arkansas's compliance with the compliance requirement for activities allowed or unallowed or and allowable costs, cost principles. Um, it says that we plan to perform, or they did perform, an examination to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the city of Greenwood complied in all material respects with those specific requirements referenced above. And what their meaning is, the compliance referenced is with the U.S. Department of Treasury coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. And it says an examination involves performing procedures to obtain evidence about whether the city of Greenwood complied with the specific requirements. The nature, timing and extent of the procedures elected depended on the judgment and their judgment and included assessments of the risk of material non-compliance, whether due to fraud or error. We believe that the evidence was obtained, that they obtained, is sufficient and appropriate to provide a reasonable basis for our opinion. So they got what they needed and they rendered this opinion. And our opinion, the city of Greenwood, Arkansas complied in all material respects with the specific requirements referenced above during the year December 31st, 2022. And all we are waiting on right now is the, um, access to the portal, which I received this afternoon. And tomorrow I'll be going out and doing the final certification of this upload onto the federal, uh, website.
And so the next year's audit being completed for the police bill will be.
Correct. And that'll be totally, and then we're done.
Yeah, right.
This whole thing is wrapped up, so.
Spirit's leaving. Do you all have a question for Chief real quick before?
Well, I have two boys at home, nobody. So you know they're pulling it all out of.
They're not, they're not, they're playing Fortnite.
Thank you.
Exactly what you're going to say. So anybody got it there?
I mean, I guess we'll need a vote to accept that one too.
Yes. All right, motion. Second. Motion second to accept.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Rager.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yeah.
Powell.
Yes.
Nice. Skip it to 15, animal shelter contract. The cha, only change is raising the rate from 15 to 18. They have been very generous and we almost, I didn't talk them into raising it, but she said, I asked her countless times if that was enough and she goes, no, it's okay. Anyway, due to everything going up, there's no food, whatnot, we are, we are still working. We as an audit working very hard to keep those, those, uh, rate or that, that, the boarding down as much as you can by doing a really good job of adopting, adopting animals out, uh, to the point that we've got to talk about a potential issue where we adopted something and now the owner showed up. I'm good with your report before you leave. But anyway, that's the only change in it from 15. I believe it's 15, do you have original? No. Anyway, yeah, from $15 to $18.
But yeah, I think you're right.
Per day.
18 is definitely highlighted on the.
Yes, yeah.
90 days is to.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was another, yes. Uh, where is that?
Very back.
Yes, sir.
Return the.
Yes. I mean, they're doing a great job and, and right now, believe it or not, I think there's two dogs out there, which is very rare for us. And also county is coming in, it's not due to this contract by any means, but Kyle's relationship with the county officer, they're working really well together as far as euthanasia and also, uh, he's certified, she's not yet, so he's, we're not having to pay that fee at the, at the vet's office. He's coming down doing it with, with her presence. So that's helping.
Just get her certified.
Uh, we are, we're working, she's taking classes.
I'll make a motion, we pass this animal shelter agreement. Or law of my.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Rager.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yeah.
Powell.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, 16 is the approval of the council calendar. I think Mr. Terry provided that.
Yes.
For you.
And I just made up the dates for the quarterly budget reviews, but they sounded, I was looking at the calendar and it seemed.
Which we can always go back and.
Yeah.
Here it is. You gotta get some on record.
What's? We're better with moving to the eighth and the second, correct? We go through this every year, I think, when it's on Monday.
Whatever you're working.
Is that January?
Yes, sir, the first, yeah, next month.
I, I mean, I.
You're better than me. I, I'll, 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 some people like to move it to these, I was trying to get.
Yeah.
You won't.
We.
Between Christmas and New Year's.
Yeah.
I will be available and then I won't be able to get you a close, anywhere close to what the year end would be.
So the eighth is.
So the eighth will give me time to get that.
All right.
Everybody good with the calendar? Motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the 2024 council calendar.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Rager.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
I can add, I need to add to my motion that the quarterly budget review, I guess it is kind of tentative.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yeah.
Daniel.
Yeah.
Powell.
Yes.
Thank you. Number 17 is, uh, approval of the janitorial contract.
Are we going to wait on that until the, uh, the department?
Well, this, yeah, I think they're just separate and they have a separate vendor. I mean, I think the question is going to be asked if Gina wants to, to maybe look at it.
Uh, Danielle said she'd let us know tomorrow what the price would be versus what we're using now.
Okay. And so this was also separate from the Harper, that was Harper.
Correct.
It's just city hall.
Yep, city, right. I'll make a motion, we pass this contract law of my.
Second. Motion second.
Is this the same contract as the last year?
Yes, it looks like there's a change, I believe, but I don't know if you're right. I mean, oh, she did, 175.
175 is.
Yeah, she did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I guess I wrote.
She did mention that.
She asked, she's requested that. She did the same with you.
You got a renewal, but it's automatically renewed for 12-month periods. Does the agreement make a renewal term? Yeah.
Unless you do, everybody. I think the question, the only question, what was the rate, 150?
Yeah, I was wondering if you were saying, I know it was.
We're assuming she got this on four or the 30th, which tells us that's the 30th day that she changed.
It's, I think it's changing for next year.
Right, I'm just saying it doesn't automatically renew. Looks like you got this price. Yes.
Two flags by the wrong flagger.
Are we all discussing this? I'm not sure. Are we all talking about? Okay. No, I think there is.
So can we vote on this, this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
With the 175.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Do you second?
Oh, great, all right, motion second, put it in, right.
All right, Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Rager.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Yes.
Daniel. Powell.
Yes.
Thank you. Harvard reports, questions from council, you got? One, two, here. Chief and Casey. Anything for you, ladies and gentlemen? I will congratulate you both, Casey and Chief, for they in, in the chamber, obviously, for a perfectly ran parade. I can, I can testify, in my opinion, it was the most people I have ever seen from administration building to the, to the edge, our curb. Consta, I mean, it's always scary, but then when you run out of candy, when you turn the corner, people are scared. But, uh, anyway, we had last, it was, I think that it was well attended, best attended, you ran out of beans.
Ran out of everything, everything.
The vendors, she got rich.
Yeah.
Chuck, Chuck, Chuck guys, Casey did a really good job. There was some, didn't know what was going to happen on your fault, but we just didn't know what all was going to come together. Quickly you got, we got the bell ringers come in, they did a good job. The little girl that flew, split the switch with cues and button. Sure, but there was just enough delay, the tree had come on, for me to try to be funny and that never worked. So, uh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As a money hungry councilman, were the vendors down there on a 4th of July deal or was it, we collected the, the taxes?
A and P.
Yeah, right. Even city sales.
Yeah, we should, but I don't think we pursued that this year on that.
Not on festivals, okay.
Well, festivals are actually not.
Range on a festival.
We don't have, we don't have any of those elements in, really, we don't have them revised yet to where we can start charging food trucks.
Wait, are you talking about this in general or for a parade or festival?
Festival parade.
Don't taxes or?
A and P.
Tax, A and P.
Yeah, A and P.
A and P, yeah.
We can, we just have to track it down.
They should be charging, they should be charging sales taxes.
Yes, they should. You hand that up, so the festivals so far.
I know the 4th of July, I told them, if y'all want to know anything about the city, think the other offers.
They're not.
No, they get packets for city sales.
Yeah, they get packaged with tax for sure.
They get taxes.
And it's a complete, it's incumbent on them to do that.
It's a past. Oh, the taxes they do, we just.
We don't have a fee for them to be here.
There's no fee for them to set up.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
They're like.
Yeah, six or seven of them.
Help people out their ears.
A dozen, really.
Also, I like how they have the, the police, uh, how they have barricaded everyone around the square.
I thought, yeah, how many officers do you have? 15?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah, it's a permanent time to commit a crime somewhere else.
Yeah.
How many is everybody? How many you got? We're three down, three down. Making sure we're not three in all lines, sure enough. No, sure is not.
Uh, but it's a great presence every time, I mean, every time I looked at, I was floating, there was somebody there making sure things were.
No, the, the thing about all of our officers.
Yes, sir.
They were all smiling.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, they're so friendly.
Even the ones I hit were kidding.
They were nice, they were pleasant to the crowd, everybody enjoyed.
And Bob took a great picture, sorry, he took a great picture of one somewhere on the sidewalk and sent it to me, it was a testament to the city and our citizens. It was a overflowing trash can and no trash on the ground. So that's a bit, that's a big deal.
It was amazing, it, it was a block.
Yeah.
From trash.
Yeah.
People taking it, putting it up, throwing.
I think it was wonderful. I know everyone's out taking pictures and stuff, I didn't see any of them either, but that's okay, nobody did.
You're in.
Obviously, everybody knows Greenwood did pretty good, it's a state championship. I, I do want to play and I can't find the one I wanted. Let's try this one, just real, see if it works. I don't want to keep you too much longer, but I think it's worth it. I don't want to keep you too much longer, but I think it's worth it.
Yes, you do want to.
I do want to keep you just, just a minute. Uh, ask, ask questions or council forum, what you got?
Where do we stand on the standard citizen buildings?
Still wait, we're, we're whittling as we speak. Travis has not got back to say, here's what I've got from the contractor, but he's working on a parent, a little bit, or which was still $300,000 more we got. The grant lady is Tracy, she's working on the grant people themselves to say, is there any more money available? Just to see, grant free, grant money. And I am currently in the process of tracking down used, slightly used, uh, equipment, commercial equipment. And I've got a bead on a wall can cooler, handle freezer and a couple of other items, so we don't have any new, that's pretty cool. Wait, I'm hoping Travis, yeah, that's a good document, do we have copies of that?
I sure can, but.
So, yeah, uh, I'm, I'm, yeah. Let me see if this works real quick, what are you bringing out there? Oh, it's fucking huge. So I listened to an early one of you doing the 85, it was Blasky Academy, and our young man ran in front and intercepted the pass around 85 yards. Can you do that, just, just give us a taste? Come on, I really need the action. Oh, man. Casey, we run it down? It was, it was incredible. Uh, congratulations to you.
Yeah, that's pretty fun, appreciate it.
For doing the voice and that's, that's awesome, so.
We'll probably do basketball here.
Oh, yeah, we need to get down there and do.
Other than with Travis whittling it down, I mean, we'll have to put that forbid again.
Well, unless he can actually talk that, that, last resort, we'll put it back out. Plan B is for him to talk to Croft, uh, Rufford and say, listen, still, this is not, you know, and that's a, that's a, not a legal issue necessarily, but it's, we got to be careful how we do that, not necessarily because of the grant. So he's working on them to see if they can make changes, which would mean you get less, obviously.
Well, we can all do a refund.
I know, I, I, listen, I told him, I love Travis Bartlett, but I said, we have a half a million dollar grant.
Half a million.
That's what I got.
But I mean, I'll see how we can award it to the, the low bidder because it, I mean, I don't, uh, almost like that would be kosher.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, that's, and the, and the great people are either allowed or don't allow, and what, what they don't, we won't do, absolutely. In my opinion, I think it's going after that forbid again. Uh, I'm trying to talk Tracy into who is not, she's the administrator of the grant, but it's the, the people that handed grant, it's, uh, she's a little more, she's a little less restricted than they are, but she has to go by those rules, so we're, we're just trying to find out what we can do. But bottom line, I think it's going back out.
We received the grant by Fort Smith, blooded house buyout.
We have not received it yet, Hunter's still working on all that, that's, that's still, it needs to be seen, he's got a list of it. I think it's five or six people that are willing to do it. They all can change their mind at the time we get their approval and say, no, I don't want to do it, or they can add to it, so we haven't, we haven't got word on that.
Cause at first, that was more.
Yeah, there was, there was probably 15 people, they were hunting for the first night and, and a lot of them, several of them, hey, this is our home, we've been here for a whole year, they don't care. Maybe care, but they don't have any. The, the idea of having to go somewhere else and find another house, even with the buyout, they're, they're looking at hard, you know.
We still have the grant for the sidewalk.
Eighty, twenty grants, which Tom and I always kind of joke about, it's not, last year's grant for, for current sidewalk that we just finished ended up being what, 60, 40, mid best?
There's still any padding, 55, 45.
There you go, due to our cost rising, but yes, we, we are approved for phase two. Uh, Jeremy, we got to get him to do probably a little bit more engineering on it to show, uh, cost, a better cost estimate. It's going to be, what did the last one cost, Tom?
$680,000.
$680,000 for that sidewalk. Phase two coming back in the by street from where it stops now is going to be at least that. Because one, you got, you got two bridges here.
Larry Easton's coming.
Uh, we've not really got any officially, Hunter, that's on Hunter's plate, he's going to be that guy. He believes strongly that it will be a much easier task than the last time. Everybody's local except one, I think, and of course, as you know, local last year was our, one of our issues until the wife found out. So she, and he's, he's on it again, so she has assured us, you just call me and we'll come down there signing, so. It's in the works, it's just taking a while, but it's going to be expensive.
We're talking about Red Lee?
Yes, yeah, she's the one that got him down there to sign the last time. So, or another, yeah, uh, I think you want to, so this is a, this is a, you guys know all this fact, but this is, this, Tom and I are, we're going to frame this and put it somewhere. It's a letter from R. Dot. You found it?
I did.
You got it. There's more, there's more. Let's get it on. That's what I'm talking about. All right, this is a letter from R. Dot, and it actually is printed, typed, and it says, Dear Mayor Kinslow, and they scratched out mayor, put Doug, so we're buddies, R. Dot. And this says, Fort Smith Mobley Contractors and Manhattan Road and Bridge Joint Venture, Fort Smith. Submitted, what? Have you want to say? Submitted the low bid of $57,849, I can't even read that, may never, 829,903.58 cents for the reference project that Department's November 1st bid letting. The Arkansas State Highway Commission has timidly accepted their proposal and will execute the contract upon receipt of the city's partnering funds. As previously agreed, the city of Greenwood is responsible for 20% of the construction cost for this project, up to a maximum, up to a maximum of $5 million. Based on the low bid, 20% is, drumroll, $11,569,000 and some change. The department is now requesting the remaining balance of the city's commitment to, as calculated below. In other words, our 5 million, if we waited, would have been almost $12 million. So we got a heck of a deal. Uh, so I signed it, an acquisition, requisition, whatever it is, four point, four point, never did my dream world that I dream I would sign something for 4.5 million dollars. As you know, and I've told you, for the last couple of years, I've been calling R. Dot going, how much money do you need, when do you want it? So we ended up making two payments of $250,000, equally a half a million.
We had to do that.
Yeah, that was part of it.
That was for tax exempt purposes.
And finally, Tom's, I kept doing that, Tom goes, you know, you don't have to keep giving them money, it's actually making us money, so leave it alone. But they finally got to a point and said, we're ready for our 4.5 million dollars. So we're in, the check for 4.5 made payable to the Arkansas Department of Transportation, it's already there, royal, came from the regions, so. But is this, is your budget?
No, that's mine.
This is mine?
We just, he authorized regions to disperse the 4.5 million.
Okay.
It's already been funded.
That's your cover?
Yeah.
So, that's that.
Reason that I didn't want him spending the money before it's time is because the money is, sits in there, it's being invested, we're getting money.
I know, I signed it too.
Charlotte also signed it.
Charlotte signed it too.
And I made a big.
And he had Daniel take a picture and sign it.
I had Daniel sometimes had to take a picture because I was signing it pretty awful, aderent. And I went to Charlotte and I said, how big a deal is that? She goes, I do that every day. Anything else to remind you?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I had a, a citizen ask me, they, apparently there's some construction going on on Brighton Place, uh, on the sidewalk. And the silt fences weren't put in properly, it's causing a bunch of good construction.
I truly are planning on.
He's not here? Yeah. But, but it's blocked up some, uh, some drainage, you know, on Fairgate and Co., and they'd like the city to play with that and.
Oh, talk to. Is it, uh, they're not here, is it, Rusty?
It's all, I don't know who, I don't know who it is, but it's, he's right.
I think that, I think I know what you're talking about.
Somebody was working on a, on a, on a wall there where those, where we go.
Yeah.
It runs all the way down, it runs all the way down a hill.
That's a massive wall, long, fair.
On a dirt.
So.
It's blocked up those granges and it's flooded those houses.
Yeah, not at all, we, we have, we have, we, the planning department, and I think COVID actually got involved one time and went out there and said, okay, no more, so, you know, silt fence is only going to do as much good as it is maintain.
Yeah.
And so that's been changed, I drove out there myself a couple of days ago, silt fence is already back down. Uh, fortunately, at least the house was finished, so they're not doing that route there anymore, but yeah, it was kind of, it was, it turned the road red with clay and went down and turned the corner, so you got that recently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday night.
Okay. I'll send, I'll have, I'll have Hunter right there tomorrow because he's the one that's staying on top of it.
Well, they check, take a look or find, go clear these areas.
Yeah, although we're there, yeah, with him on that, I can't remember.
Yeah, well, he did this, he's done it twice.
Oh, at least.
And we're still having a problem, so it's out of the top right, rotation, we're a paper chief. What I think, it's not open speeds in there that are per break of that.
Yeah, because you can talk to them all day and they won't do it, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Anything else? We got, got anything?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Thank you, brother. Uh.
I think you lost, I think that'd be the exact same. I don't know for a quick, I've got some of them all, but I don't.
Yeah, I should have done that.
America's one of five, one of seven.
I know, I know.
One game was said now, did you wish to come for a mission? For sure, just get a, no, but that's what it's probably going to stay back, if you ask her, but she was just tired of running. And Williams, her ass service, every. I didn't, I thought it did, and she was like, literally, did a rest to be in the wood, and then they're playing here, and he falls, took that for a day.
I mean, did you have to, not for her out, now that you were.
Yeah, yeah, you would think.
You know.